Okay.
Thank you.
I will call the September 27th, 2018 Town of Northwood Planning Board Meeting to order at 6:35. Presidents, Hal Kreider, Joan Caffrey, select persons are up, Beth Uggro, Betty Smith, Vice Chair, Lee Baldwin, Chair Bob Strobel, Land Use Secretary Susan Austin, Board Administrator Linda Smith, Town Planner James Burden, Burden, sorry. I deal with another person who is Burden, same spelling.
It's been a burden my entire life.
Sure it has.
Good answer.
Apologies. I've dealt with you longer than I dealt with him, so I have no excuse. We have minutes of September 13.
Motion to accept a minute.
Second.
Thank you. You should know this process, be waiting with bated breath.
I was deferring to...
Motion by Ms. Smith, Ms. B. Smith, second by Mr. Kreider. Discussion on the minutes. Let's add Mr. James Burden.
I would get him, I wouldn't see him. Go ahead, I looked at him, I didn't see him.
Town Planner to line seven.
Line 20.
Darn it, you got ahead of me.
Okay, yeah.
There's two knots there, you only need one.
They're not actually not opening.
I would say they are not actually opening.
We are, because this is a work session, we're not opening the cases for discussion, so we should not be talking about them, so that...
Yeah, but it's still a double...
It's a double negative.
We're actually not opening the cases up. We're not, not...
Yeah.
I thought you were better at that.
Unless not.
Okay. I know it's a double negative, but I...
But it doesn't, it doesn't work there.
Okay, fine. Anything else on page one? Page two, just a couple typos, line two, line 25.
Line three, and the site plan that they have provided does not. In line five should be noted H-E-R-E.
Say that again.
Here, as in here.
Line five, as noted, it was spelled H-E-A-R.
Oh, I think they fixed that.
And he has noted near the conditions of approval.
So it should be here. Should be H-E.
Oh, here instead of near.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. H-E-A, H-E-R-E. Now I get it, okay.
It's probably a little slow on the update.
Anything else on page two? Page three?
Line 15. Discussion was held. Not is.
I think you're using old copy. Can you read the sentence?
This was the one that was mailed to me.
I know. What's the, what's the sentence?
Discussion was held on what process they wanted to do to get...
It's been changed. It's not the same as yours.
Mine is the same as hers.
Well, we were discussing...
I lost my...
This is okay, isn't it? Because we were discussing it, isn't it?
Okay, yes. Now I get it, okay. Line, the paragraph, I guess line 15, Mr. Burden stated that he felt that they should discuss the zoning amendments, strike should be, that discuss the zoning amendments at the October workshop. Does that make more sense?
No, it's stated that he felt they should discuss the... It's line 15. Discussion was then, okay. Discussion was then held.
She's got it, it should be, and then it reads correctly.
I think she's on a different...
I says discussion is held on what...
Can I see your minutes a minute?
She's got the ones that were mailed, and they're, they're different.
Yes, I know, they're very different.
Because those changes, I must have printed them out.
I see the point. It could almost go either way. Discussion was then held, okay, you could say that, or discussion... Yeah.
It's kind of hard to do this, we're not on the same page.
Yeah, we're not all on the same version.
Discussion was then held, right?
So we changed that one to make it grammatical and...
I did a bunch of changes, and then I mailed them, and nobody has the notes with them, so...
Excellent. And you opened the most recent version, which is like...
Yeah. Okay, so everything you got mailed is what Betty has, and there were some changes made to those.
Yes.
And then, my mistake, I forgot to save the changes. Closed out the program. This is all the record, whatever. But, so, what she has is going to be different than what...
Yes, what I'm saying.
I gave you tonight.
So what do you want, what do we want it to read?
If Betty simply answers the corrections, the grammatical corrections, we can make sure they get made, so we can move on.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm gonna let Betty take the lead on any further changes.
Anything content-wise?
We're done.
But if it's just...
If it's just grammatical stuff?
Yeah, I'll fix that.
Do you have anything else?
I'm early. I've got line 44, 45, and 46, and 47, because it didn't seem to make sense.
About the...
About the cost?
The cost for the...
Yeah.
If they have funds available to include the setup cost of planning course...
That makes sense.
And then ask the...
And then ask them to put the rest of the money in, because there's the setup charge, and then it's, we'd have to ask for the $2,400 a year afterwards.
Yeah, but this sentence...
It's awkward, yes.
Yes, it is awkward.
Yeah. So what's the right sense here of that nut dollars?
Do you still have that?
I'm okay, I can't improve it any better than it is, myself.
Okay.
Yeah, it's awkward, but I don't think you can.
Can we vote on this?
Yep.
Wait a minute.
We gotta get to the last page.
Yeah, line four. Into the planning board budget. Rather than into their budget. Okay.
Okay. Further discussion on the minutes? There are none. All those in favor of the, assuming the motion and second are prevented, getting the dots. All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, those abstaining. One extension. Have a reason?
Yes, and I think we need to discuss it. I think the process here doesn't work. I know we're trying to be efficient, but I don't like the idea that minutes change between coming out. I know she has good intentions, but if she's deciding what is content and what is grammatical, that's not the board, I don't think it's right. I think we should either have a process where we come and we read them and approve them in advance of the official start of the meeting, so that people can, you know, get started at 6:30, or start earlier, or whatever, but I don't like this process at all.
Well, we have a lot on our plate. Can we put the vote off on the minutes until the end of the meeting?
Sure.
You just voted.
We just voted.
But I think we can return to that discussion during...
Thank you.
For his comments.
Discussion later, yeah. That's fine.
Yeah, sorry. Got sidetracked. Assuming we heard five yeas and one abstention.
That's fine.
Okay. For the record, voting designation is all members present. Okay. Sorry for the delay. We have a preliminary consult, conceptual consultation, for a site that we might know. Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us what you want to do.
I'll be brief. I'm Dick Daniels, I own Lake Shore Farm. On the leftover, at least my left, you can see the highlighted area, that's a five-acre parcel with Lake Shore Farm Inn, which has 32 guest rooms. It's been for sale since mid-June, and what I want to do is propose, discuss with you a thought we have about how to sell it. We've had probably 10 to 12 people look at it, they've been somewhat enthusiastic, except it's also intimidating. It's a very large piece. So what we are considering is, instead of selling it as one entity, sell it as four different condos. If you look at the handout I did, what I referred to the historic inn, there's 16 rooms that are rented there in the event center. We're proposing to sell that as one condo. Then the next building, the, what is labeled "dembling," has eight rooms, which are rentable, that would be a second condo. And then the annex has four rooms on top and four rooms on the bottom, that would be condos three and four.
Say that last part again, please.
Four on top and what?
Four rooms on top and four in the bottom.
Okay.
Of the annex.
Of the annex, yes. So that's, again, a total of four condos, and I'm here just to see, you know, tell you our ideas, I don't want to go down the path and...
Sure.
And to further qualify that, because the most difficult part to sell would be the inn itself, when we, if we did do the condo approach, we would still try to sell the whole piece, because that's most straightforward, but if we did the condo approach, it would be only the historic inn and event center we'd put on first, because we don't want to do something with the other two buildings that makes the inn unsellable.
Correct, okay.
So that's the general thought. A little specific, we also have the bigger piece to the left of it, the 21 acres, that's where our house is. To do these condos, we would need to have some extra land, and there could be a lot line adjustment that could make, take an acre or so from the other one.
How big is the other one?
21 acres.
21.
Right, so the inn parcel is five acres, the other one's 21.
So this whole?
That one, yes.
Oh, yeah. There we go.
So the event center and the historic inn is one unit?
Excuse me?
The event center and the historic inn is one unit?
Right. Because they sort of go hand in hand. If you have an event, people want to stay in the inn.
Can you zoom in on that, Susan? Just on the inn itself?
Yeah, it's on the... Okay, yeah. That shiny area you see there, that would be the metal roof of the event center.
Right.
Which can hold like 200 people.
Yeah. And if you actually... Yeah.
Okay, now you're better.
The concern I have, actually, if you zoom a little this way, show me that parcel, or that part. Yeah, drag is, is fine. My concern, a little bit, is that, I'm assuming that's your house?
The house is...
It's one of the houses.
Yes, yes.
It's there, on the lot you own.
Right.
Or the 21 acres. Is that if you adjusted, needed to adjust acreage on, let's call it the LSF side, you'd be essentially a zigzag lot line.
I think the primary reason why...
Exactly.
The primary reason why he would have to adjust the lot line is not the minimum lot size, it's the residential density calculation, and initially, when I heard there are four rooms on top and four on the bottom in the annex, and there are eight units in this other one, I was thinking that it was going to be almost a one-to-one, a hotel room is going to become an apartment, and that's not the case. We're talking about the annex, the four units on the top potentially becoming one residential unit, the four on the bottom potentially becoming a second. So at that point, we typically would not count hotel bedrooms in the remaining inn as residential units for the residential density calculations. We're talking about like full-on year-round rental or ownership units. So realistically, we're probably looking at about three units in residential density, which would take about six acres of property. With rounding, you may not even need six, you may need less than that. So we're probably talking small lot line adjustments to make the equation work.
Okay.
If that, you know, depending on how this eventually is proposed to be used.
Sure, okay.
And for what it's worth, I did talk with Charlie Smart, the, maybe the current Building Inspector at Scott, and they saw no fundamental objections there.
Okay.
There'd have to be firewalls put up, stuff as well.
Sure. You probably already have some already.
Yeah, I gave them a tour.
Okay. Any questions? Comments?
So it's a multi, it'll be a multifamily site?
Exactly.
The, if they're condominiums, who, they'd be owned by the individuals that purchase the condominiums?
Individual owners, individual owners, there'd be common area, you know, the grass and thousand-foot frontage.
Okay.
Association will...
But they might be rentals as another option? I just heard somebody say that, but I don't...
I don't think it would be any different than if you had your house, if you wanted to rent your house, I wouldn't think, like, if you have four rooms...
Oh, oh, no, no, okay, I didn't mean that, but yes, so the condominiums might be rented to somebody after we...
Right, but it'd still be just one unit.
Yeah.
But the inn itself, which has 16 rooms, I would envision those still would be rented.
Okay, so I, no, when I asked the question, I was just thinking of, then whoever owned the property total would be renting several units, but, so, that's not what you're proposing, though. So the condominium portion, how does the, the event center, or how does that go forth? And does it, it still exists as a...
Right, you could still have weddings there, and the guests, instead of staying in the whole 32 rooms, you'd only run out 16 rooms.
And they would be one of the condominium members?
The inn plus, right, the inn plus the event center would be one condominium.
Okay.
So the condo agreement would cover both commercial and residential operations?
They would have to sort all that out on their covenants.
Yeah, that would be in the condo documents. Certainly not tonight.
No. How they handle that is really up to them. It's just whether, yeah...
I mean, the, it would be under this board's purview when this came in as an application, if you had concerns about the language and how that was going to work, you could look at the condo documents and ask about them, but I think that would be a question for that time, once an application actually comes in. I think there's still enough influx about this proposal right now, it's still early enough in the conceptual stages, that we're not going to be able to have that out now.
I was just, basically, wanting to see, is there any fundamental flaw in what I'm saying here? Is there anything, you know, we should give up on this?
I'm not seeing any that comes to mind.
This is just a multifamily unit, right? I mean, that's the way it would be viewed, right?
Yeah, we would consider it a mixed-use site. One thing that we discussed about the dembling building that you see is possibly, I think you said there's a sort of pub space on the ground floor of that right now.
Right.
So the possibility of that being, remaining a mixed-use building on the mixed-use site as well, but the concept would stand that that would be under, that building would be under one owner, and whether they have a residential space that they rent above and a commercial space below, that would function like any other mixed-use building.
No, this wouldn't be, that's, this wouldn't be multifamily.
We would consider it multi-unit residential, as far as the residential's concerned, because we would have three, at least three units of residential on-site.
Mixed-use, multi. So, the rooms, I assume, already have bathrooms and showers and all that, would you have to add, like, kitchen, or how would that work?
What I would propose is, for instance, on the annex, the top floor, there's four rooms there, take two of the rooms, combine them into kitchen, living room, and then you'd have two main bedrooms.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, it'd still meet all the criteria for an occupied dwelling.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah.
Which is why I talked to the...
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't sound...
From a, from a land use perspective, it sounds like, it sounds fine.
Yeah, I mean, you just got to go through the process, but...
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we get into new cases. We'll call case 1814, Joyce Fontaine, 639 First New Hampshire Turnpike.
Come on up.
Please, come on.
If you don't want to sit next to me, you can sit here.
All right. Get a wheelie chair.
You're probably gonna have to pull the microphone towards you, or Gary will do it for you.
All right. Okay.
Okay, and before you, you can give me, I'll give you cues as we need, we need you to speak, but we gotta get on the, do some T-crossing and I-dotting first. Okay, so, I've opened the case, voting designation is all members present. I'll read the abutters list. If you are present in the audience, please both raise your hand and say something, so I know you're here. Bruce Farr and Judith Sanderson, representatives of Tower View Cooperative, Christopher Quinn of Northwood, Town of Northwood. Okay. Thank you. Okay, now we're, oh, no, not quite, I didn't open it yet. I did open it, I didn't find it complete, I knew I was missing something. Vote on completeness.
I think...
We did not take a vote on completeness, I should have taken a vote on completeness before I read the abutters list.
So...
Motion to find complete. Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Ms. Baldwin.
Just ask, did we see, was there an update? I didn't get it. Of this at all?
Pardon me?
Was there an update?
Not distributed.
Not distributed.
Staff hasn't received an update, but I'm guessing that we have one.
Yes.
Rolled in front of the applicant.
Because we did talk about a couple, we had a couple of suggestions, I was wondering if that was reflected in the new, it is.
We haven't received it officially submitted, but I think with the changes that I discussed with the applicant, I don't have concerns with opening the case.
All right, just before I voted, I want to make sure that...
Yeah. So we have a motion for, to find it complete. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. So now we're on the clock.
All right.
We have, by law, 65 days to make a decision. Generally, it doesn't take that long, but at least I'm telling you the law, and if that 65-day clock comes up, we'll make a decision based on what we've heard, unless you ask for an extension. Okay, so why don't you tell us a little bit about what you want to do?
Okay, so, there were three different points that needed to be corrected.
Mm-hmm.
Updated, whatever you want to call it. So I added the parking, I've amended that to a 50-by-20 foot space, so there'd be four compact cars, 8 feet wide, and two standard spaces. The, I don't know, I didn't print this out for everybody.
That's okay.
I also highlighted the driveway portion, and indicated that it would be gravel and driveway, and the driveway is the same as it has been for 30 years. Number B, 1B, was about the Google map showing all the equipment, et cetera, out back. Part of my purchase and sale agreement, there was an addendum, that all the debris had to be removed by August 14th. There was a little delay because there was so much, so it was signed off on August 20th. Everything had been removed. I'm assuming the Google map is probably still outdated.
Yeah, it's still showing all the...
At least six months or so.
There is nothing back there.
Not even any old tractors, maybe?
Nothing. Trust me, there's nothing.
Nothing you want?
I wanted to play on that.
That was part of the agreement, I didn't want nothing, you know, no debris, nothing. So, and I will say that Mr. Lombard worked his tail off to get stuff out there. So that was B.
Okay, yep.
C, I added the names and addresses and the lot map. There's also, I highlighted the existing driveway and that turnaround. I'm still waiting on New Hampshire State, I haven't received any information about the driveway permit. And, the last one is the septic.
Mm-hmm.
I thought I was going to be receiving a letter, and I found out, oh no, we don't do that. So, I'm still waiting to contact someone about the septic, whether it's adequate for changing from...
Okay.
And I will say that there were two people living there, and now there's your swan.
Yep. I won't speak for anybody else, but with 10 years on the board, I think we can, I'm at least comfortable with the change in use and knowing whether something's going to be close to pushing it or not, I wasn't concerned of that, but I'm also not a licensed septic designer, so I get...
Right. It was...
Bob, excuse me, can't that be a contingency on...
It could be a condition.
A condition, thank you, yeah.
The property was, or the septic was inspected before I bought it.
Okay.
And there were some minor repairs that were made.
Would you just, quick, just very briefly, for me, just what you're going to do, again, did you just review that?
Live in the front part of the house, the double garages would be turned into an antique shop.
And it is, oh, shed, I thought it was a she shed, okay.
There is a carport shed.
You're here for the she shed.
There's a carport shed off the back. I have a Mini Cooper, which I'm gonna park under there.
Okay, so, so the parking lot's gravel, so...
It is.
Yeah, so, really, it's just, do we have enough space? And James, you think we have enough square footage, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, I suggested that the original site plan that you had, the applicant showed five delineated 10-by-20 parking spaces that are larger than we need to meet code. So if the board is amenable to, since this is going to be a gravel parking area, they're not going to be painted and striped parking spaces, if you're amenable to the concept of the area is big enough to fit six spaces, as long as the four of them are compact spaces, and if you find that sufficient, the way of fixing that that I suggested to the applicant was just white out all of those delineated parking... parking spaces that she marked and say, this is a fifty-by-twenty parking area that can fit four compact spaces and two four-foot...
Well, if need be, do you have any more space out this way? So, overflow could park on the grass or something like that. Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't think we designate the spaces.
Yeah, and I think the reason I felt, I felt more comfortable recommending this route rather than adding a gravel to expand that parking area, is that technically changing that parking area on the site would let this from a minimal impact to a minor. So I thought in the interest of moving this quickly and not making this a bigger deal than it needed to be, that's a pretty simple and obvious way to do it.
Would you do me a favor or us, could you just pass that around? I want to look at...
This is the...
James, you haven't seen.
I haven't seen that, and would you mind zooming out one?
That is...
This one? You're submitting as a, like, second sheet to it?
Yeah, because you wanted all the butters and all the...
Exactly.
I thought that was the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, no, this is fine.
Just because you designated it, and this is essentially what we have, they just delineated the driveway, which, all right, and then what James just referred to, you've indicated here, and the driveway turnaround, how much, how much more area beyond this?
I think you'll see it on that.
It's on that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just going to have to ask this question. What's, what's this, what's the requirements for signage in terms of size?
In terms of size?
Yeah.
None.
None.
Oh, okay. I thought there was.
There's, I think there's...
That's a very small sign, because it's taken from a faux art sign that I wanted to adapt.
I think there's maximum size.
Oh.
I don't think there's a minimum size. Is that the intent of the question?
No, I was wondering what the maximum size was.
There isn't.
There is it?
There is not. The only maximum size is for an off-premise sign. A sign that advertises a business, not at that location.
Oh, oh, so a sign for that...
That's pretty small.
Yeah, it is a small sign, but I just, I didn't bring it up because of you, I brought it up to understand a little more. So really, we don't dictate sign size on a building that goes with, the sign that goes with the building.
Not really.
Not really, unless it's off-premise. My only concern are that was, and it's really not the purview of the board, more just to bring it to your attention, that you've mentioned statement before the gallery, there's, let's say, comfort facilities would be in the house for the public? Or no? The gallery has its own?
There is separate bathroom facilities in the back.
Okay, just double checking.
Oh, so separate bath for the gallery?
Yes. Okay. Like I said, that's...
So, right now...
We deal with the extra exterior of the house and the systems with it, so that wasn't really, didn't come under us, but sometimes I'm concerned not aware of some complications like that, so that's why I mentioned it.
He had a heating system and bathroom facilities in his office area.
Separate, okay.
Let's take the reference to the septic. Do we really need to hear whether, I don't see any, an antique gallery here imposing any severe use of a existing septic system and its functioning now. I don't know that, do we need to hear anymore about that? And she says she's waiting for the applicant. Says you're waiting for some feedback on that, but I don't even know that we need be concerned, myself, as I'm thinking about that, because it's not like this is a restaurant or something equivalent that would, or even a hair salon, that you could conceivably see a lot more water or something being used.
Any changes in that, if there's a problem in the future, would, could theoretically...
But we're not approving it for some of the uses I just mentioned. I mean, which would, would that be a change of use? I mean, as another antique shop...
This is a change of use.
This is a change of use.
From a house to a house.
But it's, it's an antique, okay, but we're approving it as an antique.
Right.
Retail, we're approving a retail.
So if something came in that was a different retail establishment but was not an antique shop, they could do that as a like-to-like?
That still wouldn't include the restaurant or hair salon.
It would not. Restaurant would need a change of use. I do have the letter from a licensed septic designer as a recommended condition of approval, which is not to say that you can't approve this tonight to go into effect once that letter is received.
Oh, it hasn't, nobody's received it yet, no?
We haven't. The applicant indicated she's going to need to look for a different designer to write that letter. So that's not uncommon for that to be a condition of approval, that applicants fulfill after they've been to this board, and then that's just a checklist item that, once we've received that, the chair can come in and sign off on the plans. If the board chose, you can not require that as a condition of approval, but I have recommended it because we consistently have applied that to other changes of use.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we approve case eighteen fourteen.
Point of order, you haven't opened a public hearing yet.
Oh, yes, that's right.
I do.
All right. The chair knows I'm anxious about the time, so...
Yes. Okay, at this point, I'll call the, or open the hearing for public comment. If you have, or are in a butter, or a member of the public who would like to comment on this case, please step to the mic. Going once, going twice. I will close public comments on this hearing, subject to reopening if need be. Questions for the board?
What are the, what are the conditions that we're recommending?
James rolled that up, so...
Septic and driveway permit?
I have the septic letter and the driveway permit.
I had conditions for updates to the site plan. All five of those sub-items, I think, have been taken care of. So new number one, written confirmation from DOT District Six, confirming that the existing driveway design can accommodate the change in traffic pattern, or a new driveway permit, and new condition number two, provide a letter from a licensed septic designer.
Could I add something also to the plan itself? We should end up with at least three plans, so either, whether she could take it and get the copies made and bring them back, or...
So, condition number three would be provide three copies of the final plan for signature. And then all of these would be in your notice of decision, which I would get sent out, hopefully beginning of next year.
Do you have any questions?
Is this your only copy?
No.
Of course you have nowadays.
Linda, do we normally require three?
A minimum of three.
When he's talking about signing the Velcro or the...
Mylar.
Mylar.
There's one, typically one or two Mylars, depending.
Well, that's why I asked.
But there's always paper copies after.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Okay, do you have any questions on, at least specifically on the three conditions?
Sort of, where do I, where do I go for the septic?
That's up to you.
I think that would just be finding a septic designer that would be willing to write one for you. The other alternative that we would accept, instead of just a letter, would be putting a state-approved septic design in place, and that would be putting the design on file with the state, so that if the current septic system failed, we would know exactly what you would replace it with.
Because right now, there's nothing on file.
And that's a more lengthy, the last suggestion is a more lengthy wait.
Typically, a letter is less costly and less time-intensive.
You could go online to the Northwood business list and look for local septic people if you'd like.
All right. All right.
Ask around a little bit, there's several people.
The second option of the licensed septic design agreed is more time and money-intensive. It doesn't necessarily mean that your septic, current septic, is going to fail anytime soon, even before you, if the intent is to sell the property. It just means that, as exactly as James said, if something does fail, we know, we as a town know that this is what's been approved for that site.
I'd like to make a motion again that we approve this eighteen fourteen with the aforementioned contingencies and...
Conditions.
Conditions, I'm sorry. And...
As read by the planner.
Yeah, as read by the planner, including the, well, Linda, in the three copies, I think we have that.
Three conditions?
Yeah, I added that.
That's the third condition. Okay, second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCaffrey. Yes, no.
It's got light bulbs.
It was here, it didn't come out here.
I'm the one with the hour and a half of sleep. What's wrong with you?
Second by Ms. B. Smith. Further discussion on the, on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. So you have three conditions?
Okay.
And when you get those in place, certainly let the town staff know, and I'll come in and sign the plans.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
I do, so I can make two more.
Next up is eighteen fifteen, Mark and Michelle Minnisselli, Harmony Road.
I'm in a butter, do I have to leave the table?
Yes, you do. Likewise. Okay, yes, you both do.
What are we up to now?
Because your board members stepping, recusing yourselves, you become members of the public or butters, which gives you certain legal rights, but not as members of the board.
So what are we up to here?
All right.
Number fifteen?
Yes, eighteen fifteen. Okay, that still gives us, so for the record, voting designation is, well, Mr. McCaffrey and Ms. B. Smith have refused themselves in this case, so voting designation is Kreider, Boudreau, Baldwin, Strobel.
Do we have a quorum?
We do. We have four.
Quorum is four.
Sounds like a rock group.
Looking the okay?
But...
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I was going to go with the restroom, but I'm going to hold on.
Because I'm building more than ours. Bathroom break now, bud.
The things we do for you.
Okay.
I'm going to try to hold on.
Here you go.
Okay, so I'll call case eighteen fifteen, Mark and Michelle Minnisselli of two sixty-six Harmony Road. Might entertain a motion for completeness.
Oh, I'll make that motion.
It doesn't have to be how.
How likes to do it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Kreider, second by Ms. Baldwin. All those, well, we had some questions from, on the notes about completeness on the steep-slopes bit.
The primary concern that I had was with the depiction of the steep slopes. I've seen a PDF of the plan depicting those slopes, and it looks like the applicant has some copies to pass around, so I don't have a concern about printing this complete.
Good enough. I'm going to double check. Further discussion on completeness?
That was really the only thing you were worried about, right?
That was the big thing.
Yep.
Yeah, because otherwise you didn't know how the driveways were affecting, okay.
Okay.
So do we have that or not?
Yes.
Do you have those to pass around?
Okay. Yes, we do.
Are you willing to share?
We have a seat of yes.
It sounds like they're going to come around pretty quickly.
I have eighty-six full-size and six half-sho.
Okay.
I'll take a half, if you don't mind.
Let's vote first.
Oh, sorry. Well, if we got, okay.
Yes, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay, so you're on the books. I will read the butters list. If you're in a butter, please both raise your hand and say something so I know you're here. I'll answer for Joe McCaffrey. You're here? Thank you. Pamela and Brian Young, Northwood, NNC Investments, Christopher and Jackie Troy, town of Northwood, is here, Earl McGilvien, Becky Beishaw. Did I get that name even close? Okay, I guess I did. Mary Rose Estate, the Hero Family Revocable Trust, Carol Garland, Gerald and Joanna Lambert, James and Deborah Carlton, Adrian Meter and Tara Baker, Kenneth and Doreen Bissen, Bission possibly, Glenn Skelly, Michael and Betty Smith. Yes. There's a couple faces and names I wrote, I can put together. Monica Douglas, Zachary and Brittany Goodell, Theodore Ackman and Carolyn Ackman Trust, Stephen Hillary Hayes, Wallman Revocable Trust of nineteen ninety-eight, Neil Kendall and Danielle Rollins Kendall, Joseph Wickert. Okay, okay. Thank you. And I'm guessing Aspen Environmental Consultants is your wetland scientist?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so just to double check, we have three butters, including the town of Northwood, present for this case. Okay. Why don't you introduce yourselves and tell us which one to do?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Joe Wickert, and I'm the surveyor here on the plan this evening. To my right is Mark Minnisselli and his wife Michelle is in the audience this evening. So she's going to answer all the hard questions. So what we're here for this evening is the Minnissellis own Lot Five on Tax Map, one twenty-three. Their residence is there, it's a single-family residence, it's two sixty-six Harmony Road. The property is configured, has approximately seven hundred and eighty-five feet of frontage on Harmony Road, it has a little bit of frontage on Bass Road, and I think there's one other tip somewhere.
Harvey Lake, I think.
Harvey Lake. And so, and the property is fifty-three point seven-seven acres per an earlier plan. So the proposal in front of the board this evening is to create three road front lots that would all front on Harmony Road. Those lots, property is owned general, so we need a hundred and fifty feet of frontage and two acres of area, and sort of counterintuitive, but if we go to the... We'll do it. So this is the parent tract that's configured, and these are the three lots that we'd like to subdivide off. So on the plan, they're labeled as Lot Five dot one, Five dot two, and Five dot three. This is the Minnisselli residence, Leach Field's here, Wells here. Unique feature about this property is an old runway there, an old hangar building that's here that the Minnissellis are currently using as a little gathering area. So if you turn to sheet one of two, if you turn to sheet one of two, it gives you the dimensions. Now, unfortunately, if you look at this, if you're looking at the set that I handed out, I did forget to put on the bearings and distances, so my apologies, but those have been changed from the set you already have on the submission, okay? So what we're looking at is Lot Five dot one would be two point zero six acres. On the upper right, we put a buildable area table, so we subtracted out the steep slopes. Each of the lots has over eighty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty square feet. Each of the lots has over eighty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty square feet less the steep slopes. Lot five dash two would have two point four five acres, and it would have a total frontage of two oh two point eight six. Lot five dot three would have two point one one acres and a frontage of two oh six twenty-nine. So lots that be serviced by municipal, I'm sorry, the lots that be serviced by onsite well and septic, we've done test pits. We've submitted the test pit logs and four K areas and the well radii show on the plan. We had, on the original submission, which is what you're looking at on the board, is we had broken out the over twenty-five slopes. Now, when James sent me the report last week, he wanted to see the differentiation between the twenty to twenty-five and the over twenty-five. So on the, on the handout that we just put out today, the lighter gray area, those are the twenty to twenty-five. The darker gray areas are the slopes greater than twenty-five percent. So James and I have gone back and forth on some emails, and I think the, the main question in play for the board this evening is relative to lot five, five two. So lot five two has enough frontage, has enough area, but there's a band of steep slope that's on the east side of the lot that's adjacent to the wetlands. And on that, we have, you can see, the four K areas are these, the lines with the rectangular type of shapes with the double lines on them. That's the four K area that DES requires for the state subdivision. And on lot five dot two, the, we've broken out those slopes. So what we tried to do was based on my discussion with James, is we tried to come up with an exhibit that would sort of illustrate that the lots could be built on.
Extra, two extras to the town?
Yep.
Thank you.
It's impossible for one of those to come out to the audience.
Sure. Thank you.
So. So the, the issue, you know, we're having, isn't necessarily one of compliance or inability to comply. It's more an issue we don't know at the time. So the Minnisselis are looking to sell the lots, they actually have spoken to a potential buyer, but we don't have necessarily firm idea of house plans nor the site. So if you look at the lots, if you take lot five dot, if we start at lot five, five point three, you know, there's an area that's on the east side of lot, it's on the upper side of the hill, relatively flat, that's where we dug the test pit. This exhibit shows we could fit in a twenty-six by thirty-six house and a septic system, and we probably have to move the driveway up about five feet to get out of the twenty to twenty-five percent slope. So I believe lot five, five three could be, you could build everything up front, and you'd eliminate any need for any special exception from the zoning.
And just, just.
Yep.
The, looks to be, from the stone wall to the front of the house, is approximately fifty feet, forty-five feet? Just curious.
Yeah, somewhere around there.
Somewhere, okay.
Yep. So lot five two, the middle lot, when we did the blow up, it's, it's harder to see, but you can see the darker ones, but if you squint hard, you can kind of see the lighter gray. So not knowing any type of house size or whatever, we showed a twenty-two by thirty-two with like a front load garage, right? So the only reason we really picked that configuration is to fit the building on board. So the twenty to twenty-five percent slope sort of kind of points in, and it, it comes into this corner. Sorry, can you see? So it comes, it comes into this corner, so we were just trying to find the house configuration that would work. So, you know, obviously, we have different, we have different options. One of those is, the way we're reading your ordinances, we could go to the zoning board of adjustment if we meet the three criteria. If we can put together, minimize our impact of the twenty, twenty-five percent slope, put together a good erosion control plan and drainage plan, you know, we could get a special exception. That might not be, you know, that might not be the worst thing to do, because what it would do is would open up some more of the front of this lot, so it would allow for a more conventional shaped house. It would allow for a more conventional shaped house that would be, you know, not an L if you were gonna build like your standard colonial or whatever. And it would still allow us, I think we could, we could fit everything up top. There's a possibility on that lot that I think that house would fit better just due to the configuration of the lot. It'd probably fit better to have a, like a narrow front, almost like an old time where you'd have the gable end face the road, and it would go deeper back, because that's the way the lot's configured. I think James and I had spoken about, you know, is there, is there ability to shift the lot line, the first section of the lot line between five one and five two, can we shift that over ten or fifteen feet? Pick up a little bit more area, do that. So all those are, we're certainly willing to, to do, but because procedurally, I haven't been here in a long time. I just figured it'd be easier to come in, we can kind of go through it, hopefully, reduce the number of iterations that we would be going forward to do. So I think we are asking for some waivers. So on the, on the outbound, we're asking for, to not have to survey the whole, the remaining forty-seven acres. We're asking for a waiver to not do topography and wetlands in detail on the outbound, on the forty-seventh. There was an old survey.
And just to clarify, that's the, what's proposed as the remaining lot five.
That is correct, yep. So on, there was a, Dave Sidmore did a survey in nineteen eighty-seven, and it was approved by this board, or predecessor to this board. So, you know, we do have the boundaries shown by the plan of record. So all those waivers we're asking for, just, you know, we have no plans to develop the back forty-seven acres, so we're asking for that relief. The only relief we're asking for on the three new lots that we're creating are relative to your, basically, the lot lines are, are less than perpendicular coming off the road. So if you look at, what we're showing is the abutter to the east is lot six. That lot line is already less than perpendicular coming off the road. So the problem we have is if we try to make, if we try to make the new lot lines perpendicular, we're gonna basically make a triangle, and that kind of goes against the other portion of the ordinance that's, or the regulation that states they should be rectangular. So, you know, that's the only real relief we're asking for on the, on the three new lots. So I guess procedurally, I'm uncertain as to whether we would have to go to the zoning board of adjustment for a special exception first, or if the board, if that becomes a function of building permit. That's, I guess, where we're a little fuzzy on. I know that when we went through it, I think one of, I think the only other real comment on James's staff report was relative to the septics being in the, in the setback. We're only showing the four K areas, which are probably oversized by a function of anywhere from four to eight. So certainly, we can keep the leach fields out of the septic system. I mean, I'm sorry, we can keep.
Want to keep those in.
Leach field out of the setback, so we can, we can make that work. The grading exhibit, I, I think our, our preference would be that if that would somehow be a condition of building permit, in the sense of, if somebody were to buy lot five, five two, and they wanted to build out back, that special exception would be different than the special exception we would probably get up front, because, because we don't know who's really buying them, we would probably look at them almost as like spec houses. And I think a spec house is more likely to build, be built close to the road to minimize the driveway cost. So we would, you know, it would just be, you know, if somebody could do it, they could always go back, but it, I don't know if that's efficient. And we don't, you know. So however that comes down to it, I mean, and if, you know, if it came down to, you know, if you, if the planning board were to say, listen, if you can show us that you can make a twenty-four by thirty-six box fit in here, maybe we move the line over five feet. We show that to work like we did on lot five three, and then, then the buyer, if the buyer chooses to build out back, they could deal with the zoning board of adjustment for the special exception.
Yeah.
Tom, may I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
You mentioned that there's a previous subdivision plot or previous drawing on record?
Yes, the whole lot.
Yeah, does, does that have the contours on it?
For the whole, all forty-seven, some change acres.
What I'm, what I'm leading up to is, I, I know, if my recollection's correct, I'm pretty sure we asked of another applicant either pull from an existing drawing, some of the lines, don't resurvey it, and just note that it wasn't resurveyed, or go on to what's available on, online and pull that down.
I, I believe what you're referring to wasn't contours for the larger reserve portion. I think what we suggested for the reserve portion was that they use GIS to depict slopes and, steep slopes and.
Oh, not the, not the contours.
Right. I think we suggested that they use GIS layers available from granite just on the big portion, and identify that this is GIS, it's not survey grade.
Right.
But it, it's a way for the board to orient themselves on the larger parcel.
Yeah, and, and my recollection was that wasn't that hard to do, I don't know if it's difficult for you to do, but just giving us some idea of what else is affecting these lots would maybe be helpful for me.
Okay, so the reported plan does not have contours on it.
Yeah.
So, you know, if, if, if a condition of approval was show GIS or USGS contours, we could certainly do that for the remaining, for the remaining plan. I guess we looked at it as, there was already, there's already a single-family house on it. You know, we could, I'm probably a little light on topo, but we could probably take some additional topo to the front to prove we have the two acres of contiguous, but I guess we were looking at it where as it's a forty-seven acre parcel with a house on it, there's, I never say never, but I'm pretty sure there's two, two acres there on it.
Eighty, eighty-five percent, ninety-five percent non-developable?
Yeah, so I think we, you know, so I think.
Pretty high ratio.
Right, the, the runway's gotta be like.
It's a half a mile, it's point four.
Yeah, I was trying.
Twenty-six hundred feet.
Yeah, it's gotta be a hundred and fifty wide. So it's close to that, just in the runway. But, I mean, so if you want, we certainly could, if that's a, a preference of the board, we could look to, to add that on there.
Are there any further thoughts on? On essentially showing.
Prior case that we wanted to see, those GIS slopes and wetlands, there was definitely potential for future subdivision and development. So if you wanted to ask for those for consistency's sake, you could. If you thought that maybe those were more relevant in that other case, because there was more future development potential than there is here. Yeah, I think the waiver gives you the flexibility to decide how far you're going to waive those requirements and what you'd like to see instead. So I would certainly say if you want conditions like that, that we should make those a part of the waiver approval.
Well, yeah, I, I think you're right, we can probably make a presumption on these, that this is probably okay. But I think, you know, in terms of consistency and keeping everything uniform, and maybe wanting to refer back to it later, other things in other areas. We talked about always making sure we have drawings that give us all the information, so that we're trying, when we're trying to either look at this or other things around it, we haven't skimped on doing that. And if it's relatively easy to do, that's what I'm asking.
Adding GIS and USGS contours, it's not terribly difficult. My concern is to a degree what you just said. So we're gonna have a plan, that plan's gonna show contours. Those contours are on the best available source, but they're not necessarily accurate.
Right.
All right, there's gonna be an error just due to the scale of the mapping, there's gonna be an error when we take it from whatever source and place it on paper, and then there's gonna be whatever. So, you know, the only thing I get wound up on is, it's a good picture, but it's not a good indicator of what's there.
It's not ground truth.
And we would, we would certainly want to make sure that if you had a mix between survey data and GIS data, that the GIS data was labeled, so that you know it's not survey grade, because the, the two are not comparable. Survey grade is considerably different.
What we would typically do is, you know, our, we're on, I don't know what we're on, we're either on NAVD eighty-eight or twenty-nine, whatever, Rocky. We're on NAVD eighty-eight, so that's generally gonna be the same datum that you're, either GIS or USGS is gonna be on. So what we've done in the past is, we're showing two and tens for the field, what the field contours are. We might show dotted fives and twenties for what we take off of GIS. And, you know, I would, you know, if you said, hey, can you put contours on it, that's great. I think, it's been a while since I looked at the granite one for Northwood, but I don't, our preference probably would be, if we had to pick one, we'd, I'd rather put on a topo versus the wetlands, because I think wetlands are a little bit less accurate on GIS versus whatever, so.
We would always ask for.
Right, yep.
Other members of the board have questions or preferences on showing the full-size lot? Okay, and we can cogitate on that for a bit. And I will tell you before we discuss it, thank you for taking the initiative on this document, nicely done.
I think that's what James recommended, I'd love to take credit.
Both of you. Because that's exactly, when I first looked at this, that was my first thought, it's like, wait a second, you know.
And so for, for context and to sort of put this in process, I, I think there is the question of, when do we go to ZBA if we need to go to ZBA? There is sort of, on the one hand, the planning board should never approve plans that conflict with zoning code unless the necessary zoning code actions have already been taken.
Right.
On the other hand, for something that is still in the very preliminary stages and we're nowhere near construction, we wouldn't want them to have to get ZBA action and then find out that it was the wrong one.
Right.
That they need to increase the amount of slopes that we're impacting or something like that. So I think process-wise, as long as the board is convinced that either as shown or with certain changes, the subdivision is buildable without ZBA action, you can approve this and leave it to future owners to go back and get ZBA approval if they want to impact those slopes. And we would be sure to add maybe an extra note that we typically wouldn't put in the notice of decision, so that was part of the record and that that was clear, that this is not tacit approval to build in those slopes, that there is still action to be done. On the other hand, if you think that even with some changes, this wouldn't be buildable, you could require ZBA action before you act on the site plan or on the subdivision approval, and we would table pending ZBA action. I think from a staff perspective, seeing, particularly seeing this zoomed in, I think on five point three, it looks like the rightmost driveway is kind of nicking some of those slopes, but it looked like they would be fine if the driveway was turned a little bit. But the applicant has also shown a potential driveway to the left that wouldn't impact those. But the applicant has also shown a potential driveway to the left that wouldn't impact those slopes.
Are you asking to see what those are? I've heard you were, now we're all good?
Okay, I'll keep that.
Sure.
On lot 5.2, you can see where the driveway is shown. It looked like they sort of narrowed the curb cut a little bit, it's still kind of close to the slopes. It is, it looks like the house is also close to or impacting some of those 20 to 25 percent slopes. So I think I would feel more comfortable if we were able to bump that property line ten feet or whatever we need to get to more room for that house, then I would feel a lot more comfortable with that going in. I would also note the side setback is a structure setback, but a gravel driveway is not considered a structure. So a gravel driveway would be able to go through the side setback without ZBA action, a paved driveway would not.
Correct.
So we would have a little bit of flexibility there.
Okay, just out of curiosity, I think this is the first time I've seen a, well, in my recollection, it's the first time I've seen a subdivision where the 4K septic location has included the building footprint in it. And I know we don't put, require the building footprint for a subdivision.
I think the-
I'm okay with it, it's just it's a little odd.
Correct, my, I'm guessing the rectangle with the test pit marked in the middle is shown as, is intended to be an estimate of a septic area on that build-out?
No, it's the 4,000 square foot suitable leach in there.
Right.
So that's not necessarily where the leach field is going.
Correct, well, I know, I know that.
Okay, so by DES, right, by DES standards, that's a box we have to show in order to get approval. But if you look at like, we looked at what, when we were doing the exhibit, and we were looking at three-bedroom houses with the six and seven and eight-minute perks, we were running anywhere from 135 to 150 feet, I think, of the, if we went to go to tubes. So you're looking at something like, I think the one on lot 5.3 is roughly 10 by 40.
Okay.
So, you know, that's 400 square feet for the leach field versus the 4,000 that's there.
Oh, yeah.
So we didn't see it in the ordinance where you needed like a building rectangle exclusive of a 4K.
Right.
So that's why we went with the way we did.
Exactly, I'm completely in agreement.
Is this number three, illustrative, leach field ties?
Those are, but the ones on the subdivision plans are, oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, I'm sorry.
So I think the, it looks like that illustrative septic is also creeping into the front setback. But again, I think if we were to bump that property line a little bit, that would free up some more space.
Bob, can, can we just take a step back, because I, I'm a little confused on, on, on the discussion. On, on this drawing, you have the, the, I'm sorry.
You're doing the-
Yep.
So on this one, you, you show some rectangles, that's 4,000 square feet.
Yep.
So that's, that's intended to illustrate that a septic system and leach field could fit somewhere within that 4,000 square foot area?
Okay, it's not saying, septic system has to be 4,000 square feet. They're just saying-
Somewhere within there.
Somewhere within there.
Because the lots are under five acres, we need to get DES state subdivision approval, and the 4K area is a DES requirement.
Okay, so you're just showing that, but that's just-
Correct, yes.
Okay, so then-
And if you look at the, if you look at the, the handout, the last handout, those little boxes are more plausible leach field configurations, not stone and pipe, but they would be-
Right near the test pits, thank you, now I get it.
Right, they're not stone and pipe, they're the president, the environmental sector.
Okay, no, I understand now, so for you to get your state subdivision, you drew it this way on this one. And now for us, I just want to reiterate what I thought I heard, for us, we have no 4,000-foot requirement.
We typically require the 4,000-foot area to be shown if the state requires it.
Right.
So we would still want to see that included on the plans.
Right, but there's no ordinance that says-
But we don't have any further requirements for exactly where you can put it.
So that's what you were referring to?
Correct.
Okay, so as long as the house and the septic fit somewhere on the site, that's really all that we care about, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so then I, I guess if we're in discussion, I would just say I tend to agree with James. You know, maybe even just a slight squaring off of that line would really make that a lot easier to swallow, I think.
I'd even, if we're talking conceptual-
Yeah.
Be, now I'm not going to say that, because we're not in preliminary consult.
No.
You have an application in front of you, if there are changes that you think need to be made in order to make it compliant with code and passable, you can ask for those changes or you can at least bring them up as a point of discussion.
Let me, let me propose, I don't even, I'm not even going to go that word, think about it. If you, you've obviously got the 150-foot frontage on 5-1, 5.1.
Yep.
If that was, if you added area to 5.2 by essentially sliding that 150-foot frontage of 5-1 to the left, that might solve a whole lot of problems.
Correct, and, you know, so-
I didn't want to propose it because it's taking from your house line.
No, no worries.
No, so we had talked about that with James and Mark, and so I, we're fine with that, but I guess, I just, the whole intent wasn't to waste your time tonight, so we were just trying to come here, once we know this. Because then when we shift that line over, we'll cut the new driveway line of site profiles. And then the hope being, when we come back to you, we'll have our state sub, we'll have all our permits in hand, and next meeting would go faster.
Just speaking for me offhand, I'm good with 5.3.
Yes.
My, I think my biggest concern is 5.2.
Right, me too.
And because of the location of the 4,000 square foot-
Okay.
And the, and the building permit, I think you're, I think it's just way too tight.
But Bob, I guess-
As well, since you meant, brought up the idea of possibly developing 5.2 in the bag, if that essentially angle of the lot line was more obtuse, that might, would give you a little more space to be able to fit a driveway clear up and back, if that was the case, without impacting this deep slope.
Yeah, I think that really helps a lot of fronts.
So if you, if you flatten that line, or the, the vertex and the angle by 849 a little bit, by shifting the 5.1 lines, or 5.1 parcel lot lines as well, I think that might give you, I'd be much more comfortable with 5.2.
That's fine, I think we have a good idea of what you're looking for, we were just, well, you know, the hope is, is if we can get, we, we certainly would be willing to move that lot line. I gotta look and see if it, I think it makes the lot line between 5.1 and 5.2, I think that will actually get more perpendicular.
Yes.
I think the lot line between, I gotta look at the lot line between 5 and 5.1, I guess it'll get more perpendicular. I'll have to look at it, and, but, yeah, so I mean, other than that, I, I don't think we have that problem. And what we can do then is we'll put a little bit more conventional shaped house on the exhibit for 5.2. And I can, I can reconfigure the 4K, I mean, you know, so the difference with the 4K is we're trying to keep the 4K, I think, I think I have it set at like 65 feet off of the edge of wet. The first, the wetland scientist didn't delineate between the very poorly and the poorly drained, but it's roughly 25, 30 feet inside.
Okay.
So that was the intent of what we were trying to do, but we can reconfigure that 4K to pull it out of the setbacks.
Just for relative perpendicularity, both, if you slide both 5.1 and 5.2, they will be more perpendicular than between 5.3 and your neighbor's line, so. I didn't see that as a ma- major problem, the first I looked at this. It's a lot better than suddenly lots in town. That'll go unmentioned. Okay, questions?
So for tonight, I would say it's up to the board whether you act on the waiver requests or not tonight, but I would certainly suggest opening a public hearing. So particularly so the applicant can hear if there are any comments from the butters before they go and make changes.
I would suggest on waivers that we hold off until next time, because we have a lot on the agenda, and it sounds like the applicant will be making some changes to the slots, so that might, I don't think it will, but you never know.
Might change the waiver.
Might change the waiver request.
Okay.
Not a suggestion. So at this point in time, I will open the public comment section of this hearing. If you are a member of the public or in a butter, preferably a butters first, and like, would like to speak, please do so at this time, tell us your name, and you need to speak in the microphone. No, no, there's one in the public, yeah.
How could I pass up this opportunity?
I fully expected you not to.
When is that, not, not? I don't think ever before have I-
Not, not, not to, to-
Been the butter.
Okay, you do need to identify yourself, Joseph.
Joseph McCaffrey, I-
Thank you.
Live on Harmony Road also. Just, I have no problem essentially with someone making use of their property here, and the, if I were looking at this from sitting at the table, I'd be interested in some sidelines, and I don't think there's actually too much of an issue in that regard. I, I have looked at this, I drive it all the time, but since there aren't any here, there might, just slight, won't bring it up even, I won't say problem, I'm not going to specify anything, but I think it's sidelines where they're, I think they're easily enough achieved here, but they're not on here, so. And the driveways obviously can change, but not too much because of like, the middle lot has been talked about, there's somewhat constrained both because of the wetland and the steep slope. So there's a very limited area for access, but, so, that's something I think maybe the board might have an interest in. A little of that.
Are you saying the sidelines for like the driveways and things like that?
What?
For the driveway?
Sidelines for the driveways, just so.
I actually met with Charlie earlier this week, and we walked, we spent about an hour up there. And I was just trying to get his eyes on it as well, because I know, I know he's retiring, but I know that he was a little angry.
Yeah, but that's informal, I'm only saying for the board to look at it, and the, there's no numbers there. I mean, I can, I can even rough calculate it, but if anybody doesn't, hasn't walked this, it's a curved and sloping road in combination, so. I just think it calls for sidelines. We've had several issues on this road that have been commented on before because of the nature of the curve and the slope. Some of it is old decisions, this board had nothing to do with, but I think we're a little on the careless side. So just to be consistent, that's part of what I'm getting at there, but that's all I have to say, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? At this time, I'll close public comment, subject to reopening, or, sorry.
We only have three in the room while I'm just going to move on.
Oh, please don't get up when you're necessary for quorum. Bad house.
Did you hear what Mr. McCaffrey said?
Well, I can, I can, I can repeat, he had some concerns about sightlines, but he thinks they can be mitigated. He didn't, he isn't opposed to the lots in general.
Good recovery.
So as far as, James and I spoke about, we, we had no problem cutting a line of site profile.
Okay.
I didn't necessarily see in your ordinance the, the actual requirements, we were, I didn't know if we're using 3.5 or 3.75 or 4 target height, and so when it started moving, we did cut them, we have cut profiles.
Okay.
When, when we became aware of, my initial thought when we read the regs was we, we could put a driveway through the 20 to 25 because I didn't see a prohibition on it. So when we, when we talked to James and we found out we couldn't, and we shifted that driveway higher up on the hill, we need about another 50, 75 feet of topo to the east, just to make sure when we cut the profile, it'll work fully.
Okay.
So we will make that submission on the next time back.
Okay. Thank you for that, that, this area has been a concern for the town before. So that's, as obviously Mr. McCaffrey spoke about, but that goes to, in this case, in this specific site, I think the, the sightlines go towards the idea of, is it buildable subdivision? Obviously you'd have to have that driveway.
Yeah, Charlie seemed to think so, so.
And that's, it was good for you to speak, Dave.
Yeah, I was trying to just be proactive.
So that's good, okay. Questions for the board? Comments from town staff?
No, I think the site, so the slopes issue in terms of interpretation of the code comes in where the 20 to 25 percent portion of the overlay requires a special exception for any construction, end of story. The 25 percent or greater forbids construction of structures and roads.
Okay.
So staff's interpretation was that it seems like the 20 to 25 percent is pretty clear, construction is construction, whether it's a structure or a road or a driveway, what have you. And it doesn't make sense to be so all-inclusive in the middle one and not be inclusive in the top one, so we've applied construction to both. In other news, I found another item for the list of zoning changes this year.
Yes.
That I'll be showing you in October.
Okay.
So I think the, I think technically you didn't close the public hearing, which is fine. I think from here, did you?
Yes, I did.
Maybe I missed it, didn't hear it, but in either case-
Close the public comment for subject to reopening at the board's pleasure.
Okay, well, you've done it now in, in either case. So I think if we have a date certain that we'd like to continue this to, we can do that. Otherwise, we can table it and schedule it.
Next month, sure. Do we want a decision on the GIS data? I would, or any further discussion on the entire lot, showing the entire lot. I can see both sides, in a case like this, I would, I am, guess more. Go ahead, you start this thing. I'm curious as to that, well, I guess I'll make it as a comment, but you showed the contours all along Harmony Road and up to the driveway of lot 5.
No, I think we have the, I thought we, we topo'd all the way to the end of the frontage, because we're showing two foot contours on the remainder of the road. But all we did was just do the road topo.
Yes, you did the road topos.
Yep.
So what are the, but on, on a portion of lot 5, you have topo shown?
Yes.
Or contour shown?
Right, we topo'd to the driveway, that was just, because it was simple for me to tell my crew to take topo to that.
Okay. Okay. Um, answer my question, never mind. Any more thoughts on the rest of the GIS stuff?
Yeah, I, I, I'll just reiterate, I think it's easier to see everything and it just makes it easier, I mean, I understand you don't think it'll impact what else happens on that back lot, but if it's easy to get the information, I'm always in favor of more information.
Well, what's the, now would be the time, I, I would not want to continue this with the applicant making changes to the lot without putting that request in.
Right, yeah.
So it's a question of, do we want to put the request in for showing GIS contours and wetlands for the entire lot?
Well, no, he said no wetlands because the wetlands.
Well, okay, well, Dana.
Yeah.
Let me, let me be generic in this case, Dana. Sense of the board, I'm sensing you want the whole, you want more data.
Yeah, I would prefer to see more data.
You want more data?
I kind of would like more data.
I'll go either way.
I'll go either way as well.
Can we pull somebody in?
Ask James.
James and I talked beforehand and.
He's not going to be helpful.
I, I think as long as, um, either it's on the plan for next time you hear this before you approve the waivers, so you can say, yes, this looks good to us and we're approving a waiver for this, or that, um, you're very clear about what exactly you want, um, you ask conditions of approval of the waivers if they need to make any changes to what information is on it, um, as long as procedurally we get it right.
My concern with showing the entire lot and the data on the entire lot is that if we, I agree with your intent, I'd want to see the whole thing, but it is not impacting this application to show that whole part, so if we leave it off, if Mr. I'll get the.
Minnissally.
Minnissally, thank you, I was looking up, because I, I got the Sally part, uh, wants to develop somewhere else on the fifty, on the forty-seven, on the, on the remainder.
Then it has to be done.
You have, you have to come, he has to come back and do the full thing.
Okay, that's true.
So if it isn't shown, yes, I agree, we don't necessarily know about it, but it's also not part of this application.
I think one of the, if you request that of him, somebody could come in with a hundred acres and to be consistent, you're going to have to keep going forward with that. The board is typically, uh, and if the data is readily available online, then.
Yep, would.
That's another side to it, whether or not you want to, this be a juncture point and.
Sure.
Start asking everyone or.
Let me ask opinions of the professionals here, if as, instead of showing, merging GIS data with your site, your subdivision plans, could we have the remainder of the forty-seven acres shown as on a separate page without?
I, I think I would suggest since we have two pages, that if you did ask for the GIS, that it only be on the larger page.
Sure.
Um, so the, the big picture is GIS data and it's labeled as such.
Exactly.
And the smaller picture is only the.
That's why I don't, exactly what I didn't want to do is merge different accuracies on one lot, that would not be good. Um, okay, if that's the case, I am leaning toward showing on the larger lot, GIS data for.
This one.
Yes, the back for steep slopes differentiated between twenty-five and twenty to twenty-five. Anything else? If you want to see, because it's on the larger lot and not larger plan and not the detail, and it will have a disclaimer of not survey, GIS data only, do we want to include wetlands?
No, I don't think we, I think you.
Keep in mind, this is where all the, the fun is, and those have already been differentiated by a wetland certified wetland scientist, those are.
I think I would agree with the applicant that it's easier to get LiDAR data that turns into somewhat accurate, at least for basic information purposes, contours that, the, the wetlands GIS, um, let's just say the differentiation between the different wetland GIS layers that I've seen doesn't give me a lot of confidence in any of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
I wanted to bring it up, just, I'm, I lean the same way, but it had been mentioned. Okay, so it sounds like steep slopes, twenty to twenty-five and twenty-five and above in the, over for, on the sheet two.
Yep.
Sourced by GIS, disclaimer by GIS, are you okay with that? Not that I, not, you get much, much choice in the matter, but.
It never does, but I mean, we, my only concern is, if you want to use a generic and take twenty-five percent and up is a, is the range to show something informationally, all right, that's probably, but when you're, when you're breaking out twenty to twenty-five on GIS topo, it's kind of got a lot of fudge to it, but that's fine, everybody knows what it is, we, I think we can work something, go from there.
I think we can include a note.
I think the granite layers that are already calculated, steep slopes are a larger one of twenty-five and up, and I think the smaller one is fifteen.
Okay.
To twenty-five, so I, I'd suggest if you're using granite data, maybe just show the twenty-five.
I was going to say, let's, can we show, we'd like, we'd like you to show steep slopes.
Yep, that's fine, we can take care of that.
Whatever, however they're defined.
Hmm.
Because like I said, we're, you covered our regs on the front, on sheet one, however you want to show on sheet two for steep slopes is fine, is up, is fine from the board's perspective. Okay, date and time?
If I could just comment on date and time.
Sure.
If the applicant is comfortable that they could come back for the work session, I would like to recommend that. Uh, I know that's not a typical practice, but, uh.
Oh, yes.
James is not going to be here on the twenty-fifth of October, and he's been very involved with us, so it would be.
When's the work session?
It would be October eleventh. So I know that would be, uh.
Yeah, you'd have to turn your stuff around quickly.
Is that too soon?
Um, I don't know if it's necessarily, when do you need it by, when would I have to get it to you to, for you to write your staff report?
Uh.
Into next week? Would that give you enough time?
Next week will be plenty of time.
No, I may have a meeting, but I could probably send Steve here, so I think it should be around two o'clock.
Well, I think we, I think we can get something in by the fifth, and if that works for James, and as I said, it may be one of my associates that'll be here, but either be, one of us will be here, we, you know, hopefully by that time it'll be a little bit smoother.
Okay.
Worst case scenario, we can continue again.
Yeah.
To the end.
Right. Okay, so we'll continue this to October eleventh.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case. So in this case, just to clarify.
So I think in the interest of time, I'll give you an overview of how I think we should handle these. So originally, um, the applicant submitted three applications, eighteen dash sixteen and eighteen dash eighteen were both subdivision applications.
Right.
Um, and that was a miscommunication between the applicant and staff, um, after the last time you saw this. Um, you previously approved a subdivision on this property, um, to take one lot into two, um, as part of that application, we showed a potential driveway location that was outside of the twenty-foot setback, um, that's required for a single-family residential. The applicant is now proposing multifamily residential, which would bump that setback from twenty feet to fifty feet, which would have impacted that driveway. So one thing they needed to do was amend the subdivision to move that driveway, they also needed to file a subdivision because they're proposing, um, instead of multifamily apartments, they're proposing condos under different ownership. Um, so to handle that difference in ownership, uh, the way we would handle that from a land use standpoint is a subdivision application, even though they're not actually changing the lot, that lot is now under mutual ownership, um, and you're showing the units that will be owned separately. Uh, so after the applicant filed those as two separate applications, that looked at it, and we really didn't see a reason they should have to file two, um, so we combined them into eighteen dash sixteen, that had the more inclusive of butters list, so anybody that should have been notified was notified, um, and we think that we can handle all of those under that application. So what you have now, all materials for eighteen dash.
So all materials for eighteen dash sixteen and eighteen dash eighteen that were part
of the original applications, we are considering to be part of application eighteen dash sixteen and part of one subdivision application.
Okay.
You also have application eighteen dash seventeen, that is a site plan application for the multifamily housing. Um, because it's bigger than single family, it kicks into, um, site plan. So I think what makes the most sense in the interest of time and just so that we don't have any redundancy happening, is that, um, we have one motion to find both the subdivision eighteen dash sixteen and the site plan eighteen dash seventeen complete. We discuss, um, all aspects of both applications as one project, uh, that we have one public hearing related to one project, and then we will break out the motions for, um, approval if the board is ready to get that part tonight for, uh, it doesn't really matter what order, but I would suggest the subdivision first.
Right.
Um, they're not requesting any further waivers on the subdivision, so we would have a motion for, uh, approval for the subdivision, then a motion to approve waivers on the site plan because there wasn't requested waiver there, and then motion, uh, for approval of the site plan.
Okay, and as far as public notice goes.
We have no concerns about public notice.
Okay, let's double check on that, everybody.
Eighteen, eighteen dash eighteen, since it was looking at only one of the parcels that had been subdivided, had a smaller a butters list, um, but we made sure that we noticed on the larger a butters list for eighteen dash sixteen.
Okay, so essentially all, all the butters for all three got, all, everybody got all three notices?
Uh, everybody should have gotten two notices.
Two, two notices.
We didn't notice eighteen dash eighteen because we considered it to be part of eighteen dash sixteen, um, and if we were returning the applicant's application fee, we weren't going to send a second set of notices.
Just double check it.
Basically, I took, I did a big buffer and I double checked with what turned out to be.
Okay. So for, I'll call, no, I won't, uh, we need a consideration of completeness for eighteen sixteen plus, prefer to do it that way.
Eighteen seventeen.
Eighteen sixteen and seventeen.
So moved.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Mr. Kreider, and note for the record that, uh, voting designation for eighteen sixteen and seventeen is Kreider, McCaffrey, Budrow, Smith, Baldwin, Strobel. Okay, uh, just vote on discussion on completeness. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Both applications have been found complete. Six, six zero zero. I will read the a butters list, if you are in the audience, please both raise your hand and speak so that I know you're here as soon as I get to the list. Okay. Ridge Road Properties or representative thereof, JP Structures, Mark Lambert, Jr., Sandra Johnson, Douglas Sweet, Johnson Family Revocable Trust, Town of Northwood, Tony Mattress. Okay, and Town of Northwood. Um, just for the record, note that the chair is in a butter, two in a butter in this case. If anybody has any problems with that, please speak now, I do not intend to recuse myself because I have no interest in this project aside from outside of the application. Okay. Ms. Frankowitz.
Good evening. Good evening. So we were here last month at the conceptual presentation, the plant stayed the same, we just did all the engineering to it now, grading, um, but I'll go over the specifics again. The overall lot is ten point oh four acres, uh, and what we're proposing is to retain seven point eight nine of that acres in open space, DES, as well as James has asked for open space documents, which is one of the, one of the things we need to provide. Uh, the lot itself has six hundred and seventy-eight plus feet of frontage on Old Turnpike Road and another twenty-eight plus or minus up on, uh, Old Canterbury Road. The drive, the main driveway is coming off Old Turnpike Road, uh, the units we service by one leach field, each, each unit will have a septic tank that ties into a main that will go to one leach field. Uh, we're proposing two wells, even though the, the site, or the units are small enough that one well is sufficient by DES standards, the owner wants to propose two locations just in case it doesn't work out with one for gallons per minute.
Just to understand that question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The, um, does not depend in part on the, um, on the output of the well.
What's that?
Does not depend on the output of the well in part.
The wa- other well?
The well, you said, whether using one or two.
Yeah.
I mean, if you had a low output well, it's not going to.
Sure, right, if he, if he gets sixty gallons per minute out of that first well.
You're golden.
You're good, yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, we're proposing five units, as calculations allow for, one building, he's proposing all to be two, two bedroom units. Um, we did provide enough parking for two or more, but he's proposing two, it's two spaces per unit, and then, uh, and then some additional parking across the, the parking, uh, as gravel parking, with seven overflow parking spaces. We're proposing two, two, uh, parking lights, um, there of course will be, at the doors will be the lights going into the house or to the unit, and then we're proposing a light on either end as a pedestal light to, like, the, the parking lot. One dumpster location, which is, is as you come in, easiest access for the dumpster truck to get in and out, outgoing in front of the unit, still have to go up, turn around, but. Um, we did, as you know, this, this could have been a five lot residential subdivision with a road and everything, but the owner didn't want to do that, that he is allowing, um, somebody to mow the lot, the land right now, and he hopes to continue that when this is done, the open space being mowed by them and maintained. Um, we are asking for, we, we did originally ask for three waivers, but there was two of them we don't need because this isn't considered a driveway and not a road, uh, so the one waiver that we're asking for that's required by the regulations is. So, the one waiver that we're asking for that's required by the regulations is a traffic study. I don't believe the traffic study will show us much on this because it's fairly low traffic. We did do a sight line and as on the two lot subdivision, there is part of the bank and bankability of right as you come out of the units that will have to be graded back, which is all within the site plan grading plan as it...
So, essentially, the...to clarify that the hillside between the existing structure and the proposed driveway?
As you come out of the units, it'll be to your right, so down the hill.
Oh, down the hill, okay.
We're pretty much at the...where the driveway is coming out now is pretty much at the peak of...
Okay.
But because we're set back fourteen feet and the eye height and everything, that bank goes up pretty steep there. That's all going to have to be all graded out.
Okay.
And the drainage plan is a pretty simple plan. It sheet flows from the units across the parking over the gravel into a swale that comes down around the road. We have swale on either side of the road collected and then a little detention area up front with a stone weir, which is well below the road, so if something was to fail there, it's going to go up over that.
Okay. Just to clarify for my own ignorance, if you want to call it, the on sheet five, which is the drainage, the TC is tree cover?
The what?
TC, the three...those are trees in the...on the overflow parking area?
Yeah, no, they're just...yeah, lands, that's the lands. Yeah, it'll cause a few trees.
Okay.
Some around the lights up near the units as well.
Yep, yeah. Just wanted to make sure that wasn't something I misunderstood.
Nope. Yeah, and they're noted at the bottom of that sheet just what type we're proposing.
I knew you were completing, I just didn't see it.
Is there a small...another small copy of the...
I got some...
...multi-planned, yeah.
I got a few more of these too, if anybody wants.
Okay. Looks good.
Thank you.
More?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Questions?
Page five, you said?
What's that?
Page five, you said?
Page five shows the grading and lighting and...
Thank you.
Landscape. So, right now, we do have DES review. They sent back two comments. One was...and there's both for documents, both for the open space document and for the condo documents, which James asked for as well.
Okay.
And the reason they weren't submitted is just you get them into an attorney and the cost of it, he just wanted to make sure it was...
I'd just like you to go over the sight line requirements again.
Would you need to...well, okay, I wanted to talk about that too. Do we have anything?
Yeah, I had any questions, I should...
I did, but...
Okay, I withdraw my question.
Well, you'll have to withdraw it, just anything simple that we want to talk about, questions, things you want to see, that you want explained, but Hal, I think you're going to have to move onto the table if you're to be heard or Gary will make you move.
This new mic projects really well, but I'll defer to others.
Okay.
I want something just general right there.
Sure.
About the lighting?
Yep. Looking at sheet six?
Yes. And the...I mean, the falloff looks fine. That's based on...this is really...I know I asked for the small copy, but the extra small, so...
I do have full size.
Yeah. But it's...I thought I would avoid it just for the microphones or the stals ears over here, but I...is there a...once the...this is for the lot lighting, for instance. This is relative to lot lighting and the lighting I think that you referred to on the houses has got to be a left door.
Yeah, just your typical...
Yeah.
Light.
Yeah. Is there really...particularly with the lot lighting, I guess, is there anything that holds that to...does the design of the light kind of control, sure, but does it control the future of how that might go? In other words, these scales and all are based on as it's proposed to be set up.
Right.
If somebody comes along and puts a spot on it, as sometimes they do, yeah, in different situations, it changes this relationship. When we bring it up, there is a commercial enterprise in the front, they have their own lighting, which is more substantial, understandably. This being just...
Go ahead.
As you get...just this is being pushed back into a little more rural area and it's...I'm just thinking, this looks fine to me. Does it have the potential of...
Well, we're proposing a specific light at a specific height and that's what these can be...are based on. So, I guess if somebody came in and put big traffic lights in and...
Could change anything in the future.
That would be a violation of the site plan approval.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, the question is really just that, that's part of the awareness.
The light fixtures only fit one type of bulb.
Well, yeah, sometimes.
Yeah, well, for commercial...
Joe, if you want to see the light fixture model, that's on sheet eight oh eleven.
Is it on there?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. It's more a matter of just folks being aware of the impact of something like that. Do you want it to be sufficient but not...
Not a bright street light.
It brings up a point.
Just because, you know, a lot of people, and myself included, actually remark on as you get out into the more countrywide aspects of the area, I mean, you've got some beacon there, which is just somebody who backed it, but doesn't do their neighbors much good.
Having...just looking at the cut sheets for on sheet eight of eleven, are those LEDs firing up and reflected off or are they on the top of the fixture?
They're on top of the fixture.
Firing down, okay. Just curious. It was sort of hard to tell.
We use Sharon Lighting to do the designs for us and that's...it must be the new one that they're using to...
Yeah.
To force it all down.
Okay.
Oh, that's so...that reflects off the top and then it goes down?
No.
Signs down.
It's in the top.
Signs down.
Okay.
So, there's less chance for it to spread. I just couldn't tell from the cut sheet. I've seen them both ways.
There's no way I can read what's on there.
That's okay.
No.
I have...well, Hal, you had a question before, so I'll let you bring it up.
Okay. Could you just go over what the requirements are for sight lines coming out of the driveway and then I get determined where you have to grade and where you don't?
For reference, we were looking at sheet seven.
So, since you're sitting next to me, let me just show you this way and maybe I'll try to explain to you others. So, I'm looking here and I'm assuming that's this driveway here.
Right.
And so, you know, looking down this way, you said, oh, I'm going to grade some of this away here.
Right. So, if you look at stationing up here on the...
Yeah, so you might have to grade some of it away because it's the existing grade is here.
Station one hundred to zero, so right in there, that bank right in there would have to be graded out.
Okay. So, what I didn't quite understand because I was following this...
That's your existing, yeah.
What...at what criteria do you hit where you have to grade? Why don't you have to grade on this side, I guess is my question? If this is the line you're using to decide where to grade from?
DOT...I'm going by the DOT standard, which isn't necessarily the town standard, but it's two feet, so they have...you allow you two feet of snow cover.
Oh, so you have to be able to see from four feet down to two feet?
Well, you're looking at three point seven five. Anywhere within that, your existing grade can't come within two feet. So, if you take that sight line, which is this offset at two feet, that's what you're going to have to grade back.
Okay, so...okay, so on this one, I see, you know, here's the sight line and the grade is above it, so you're saying you're going to cut that back.
Right.
On this side, would you not have to do the same?
It looks like there might be some on that.
Okay.
Which in the first subdivision approval, we had proposed grading in that area too.
Okay, so...
For the right hand.
That was where the driveway was...
Original, the existing driveway is.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's...
So, I can show that on here because that will be graded out.
Yeah, I can, yeah. Because I was just confused why you wouldn't have to grade on this side.
Right.
Okay. And then may I ask a second question?
Turn it over. You got the floor.
Not that it's a big deal to me, but it's just a question really maybe of how you decided to run the water when it comes off, so...
Which sheet?
I'm looking at sheet five.
Okay.
So...
Drainage plan.
Yeah. So, I understand it's all going to sort of drain this way through the culvert and stuff. So, I was just wondering, is there any way that we can get so at least some of this water flows out back this way as opposed to through the front and under the culvert? Or is the slope...I mean, the slope's basically this way. Is there any way to contour it back out that way or does that not catch much water?
Well, one of the requirement is you have to...and north of that has a very tough drainage regulation. You have to be 10% plus or minus of existing conditions. So, if we let that just run off there, we're not controlling it, it's going to give us an increase. So, we had...really getting impervious and stuff we had to capture because there's no impervious out there right now. And right now, from the front of the units towards the gravel parking, that's all flowing that way and then the back of the units, of course, will flow off and that's what we're grabbing in the back there that you were...
Oh, just...you're just grabbing this part here that'll flow off?
We're just grabbing the half of the house that will spill off to the back.
Okay. So, the rest...yeah, so I guess the rest will...
The rest will continue...the open space area won't be touched, so...
Okay. Okay. Great.
I had echoes...well, I also had some concerns over sight line. This is a different page and...
Which page are you on, Bob?
I'm just looking at sight line seven, sheet seven.
Sheet seven?
Seven oh eleven. I had a difficult time locating the...in the drive-by I did and I'm very familiar with this lot, exactly where the driveway would come in relative to the rest of the house or the rest of the lot. I'm also concerned being able to see the grading. I didn't see any...I think you did a fine job on the drainage proposal.
Yeah.
What I'm having some difficulty with is visualizing it.
Yeah.
So, what I'm trying to cogitate on without saying the word is...
Cogitate?
Pardon me? I'm trying to cogitate...
Think.
Think of doing a sight walk and having...but I'm trying to...the main reasons would be to satisfy my own brain as to where the driveway is going to be with respect to the hill, with respect to the rest of the stuff on the drawing and the driveway so that I can see that the sight lines are going to be met. I'm not an engineer, that's your job.
Yeah.
But I need to see it for myself and I couldn't doing the drive-by.
Can I throw in a question along your...
Yeah, same topic?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if you...go ahead if you're not...got more on that, but regarding that water flow...
I don't want to deal with water flow. I want to deal with sight line.
Oh, the sight line. I thought you were talking about the...
Not drainage.
Page seven.
Same sheet?
Yeah.
Well, different sheet.
Okay.
But I'm dealing with sight line. We'll bring drainage up in a bit. So, I know we can ask you to stake out the driveway. It probably would be helpful if we decide to do a sight walk, which we have not discussed and we have not decided on yet. I want to be very clear about that. You know, things like maybe the corner of the lot or house of unit one and unit five, just to get an idea where the building is going to go, a couple of things like that with some tape. What I don't know and I'd welcome suggestions is to how to get an idea of the grading that will be done. And I...and if it's even necessary. The issue is it's not the drainage aspect for the...but it's more the sight line.
Sight line coming through the driveway?
No.
As it sweeps out of the parking lot or on the road itself?
On the road itself from grade seven because I...if I, when I walked it, the road and I made a guess of it as to where the driveway actually was, I could not see to the sight line to short...to school road, school street. And I did that with two different cars of two different sizes. So, and I'm not questioning...like I said, I'm not the engineer, you're the designer, you're the one who's got the license on the line.
Yeah.
But I made the assumption that I was probably not on the driveway to be able to do that. But I think as well with several butters here, it might be an idea to think about having a sight walk scheduled quickly and so that we can get a better lay out of that. It's not something we normally do, but in a case like this, just for the sight walk or for the sight lines and the drainage, the grading aspects, if we can come up with a way, if you can come up with a way to show that.
We can stake that stuff out.
Stake it and put a tape down saying, you know, it's going to be graded down five feet from this point or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be definitely...there's substantial grading going on that whole front area going in. That whole bank's going to have to come down.
Okay.
And it's going to be graded back up to the site, so...
Okay.
What's out there now is...
Is not at all what we're going to see.
No. That bank is so steep right there.
Okay. Just that might...that might modify me, but...
As we had to keep that 50 feet, so we had tried to keep it as far that way as well. Don't get it down the slope too much.
I think a lot of the part of that bank has to come off and that's why I was asking if there was no grading showing.
Right.
Because I think there will be quite a bit.
And on the sight line, the zero point is actually on what the two...couple of feet back from the edge of the road?
It's on the edge of pavement and then of where you sit for the sight line is 14 and a half, which would go down from there.
Right, right.
Because we have to go negative off the road.
Maybe what...something else to think about, because I'm trying not to...I want to get myself satisfied, maybe answer a few questions, but not delay this any more than need be would be to stake out, not schedule a sight walk, but have the applicant stake the driveway on the road so we can do a drive-by just for clarification. Would it be with the slope that is taken out, how...well, there's no grading to be done where the units... done where the units themselves are, significant grading to be done where the units themselves are?
Yeah, we tried to balance the site with a cut and a fill. Up on the units.
Yeah, let me keep thinking about that. I'm not, I'm not adamant that we need one.
What do you sense, from your previous description, Bob, the, having looked at it, you said two different situations, it's the one, as, as we're looking at the map, it's the one, well, the one towards school street, let's put it that way, that's the one that's more problematical?
Well, it was, I'm trying to put the blame on myself for not knowing exactly where the driveway is.
Yeah, but that's.
But, yes, it was the, I'm not too worried about the sight line to further out Old Ken or Old Turnpike. It's the sight line where most of the traffic is gonna be toward school street.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and right now on the plan, we're showing, well, it's 357 feet to school street.
Sure.
Which is more than enough, but if.
It's more than enough, but again, you know, based on me, as you crest that hill.
Yeah.
From, and I'm not, this is, you're impacted by this, it's not, it's the layout of the road, you know, the sight line drops off, as soon as you get, up until you get to that crest, you cannot see over that.
Well, and the interesting reminder, which Mr. Frankel, which made point of, is that there's, there's also a two-foot snow level that goes on top of whatever that is. And that, and that around here is very reasonable.
Yep.
I think, he said that they are gonna do some grading on that side, Bob.
Yes, I agree, I know.
It's just that the line isn't shown on the drawing.
Right.
Yeah, we did show that, like I said, on the two lot subdivision, so I'll look at what we showed there and let in on this plan set.
Okay.
It is on the other set of plans?
I believe we show grading going up that hill on the, on the two lot subdivision.
You might have, but I don't think you resubmitted it.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think it was, it was for where the, when it was over further, when it was over 20.
Well, that, that grading would have been for the existing driveway that's in place right now.
Right.
No, no, for the, for the second lot, the bigger lot, that was closer to the lot lot, it was 20 feet away, and I don't think we've seen it until just this drawing, when the driveway is 50 feet.
Correct.
From the lot lot.
Correct.
But I guess to, to your point, Bob, I mean, it might not be bad to just do what you said, put two stakes in where the driveway is, and maybe one more stake to show maybe how far back they have to grade to meet that slope requirement, you know, so like, you know, just put a.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just put a stake on the hill to show.
The driveway's gonna be here.
Hey, to make it, we're gonna have to cut away this much of the, the bank, and then you get some sense as to whether, okay, let me move out a little further, oh yeah, now I can see, so when they cut away the bank, yeah, it should work.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Sure.
I, I think if you would like to see additional information on the site itself, I would suggest that you schedule a sight walk. I think that if you're asking just to have stakes out there that you can drive by and interpret, I would be concerned that perhaps not everybody would interpret them the same way. I think that if you actually want to see things on site, you should schedule an official meeting that is open to the public, so that can all be explained and contextualized at the same time on the record.
Well, let me ask one other.
Sure.
Related question. I mean, these are the plans, and this is what he's saying he's gonna build it to.
Mm-hmm.
Can one of our conditions just be that we verify the site, that the, you know, before we, before Northwood issues their driveway permit, we verify the sight lines?
I don't think we need to.
Need to do that.
Issue that as a condition, because that's going to be part of the driveway permit, and the driveway permit itself is a condition. So I don't think we need to have the criteria that the road agent needs to do his job, because we have more confidence to do it.
It's a good way of putting it, because it's really what it is.
But I, I would, if the board chose to act on this tonight, I would require that the, suggest adding as a condition, and I've noted it here, that the plan be amended to show that grading to the east of the driveway in the site profile.
I'd say grading east and west, just to be sure.
Well, the grading to the west is already shown, the grading to the east is what is missing.
Yeah, so I guess, Bob, the question in my mind is, is a sight walk really necessary? I mean, he's surveyed it, he thinks he can grade it to meet the requirements, or maybe would have altered some other things. So I guess, I guess I'm saying, I don't feel, you know, the drawing's pretty accurate to me, I guess, I, I don't, I don't feel I need to see it out, out there again, but I certainly would go with the other folks to visit.
We have time before the, we make any decision on that. Other topics of interest for the board, comments, questions?
Let me ask, oh, one of the question, just, again, just to clarify what we are supposed to cover and not cover. One of the drawings in the original submission included showing what the condos looked like, and included in floor plans and stuff. The floor plans and things like that are not under our.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, but you, I like the layout.
We could picture ourselves putting the couch there.
But it wasn't, I mean, that wasn't something we have to think about or cover.
We do have a architectural consistency area, but I don't think we're covered, that's, that's the opposite end of town.
Yeah.
Design review, is that the word I was looking for? Design review, something like that.
Maybe.
You mean the overall outside appearance?
Outside, characteristics for it where it matters.
Yeah.
So, yes.
But that looked pretty.
But that's toward the, toward the four corners, or toward the traffic light.
Yeah.
Not here.
I'd like to follow up on that.
Sure.
I assumed you were talking about before. All right, well, you know, I'm gonna look at this one, thanks, I'll go back there. Just to understand, the, this is gonna be on page five. You're, you're proposing a, described as a broad-crested weir, it's gonna be riprap rock.
Yeah.
It's gonna kind of direct consolidate the water that's coming off the slope there?
It'll control all the storm water coming off the site in that first, I would say, four bay area, it'll hold it, and it'll either infiltrate, or if it, if the storm's large enough, it would slowly spill over that broad-crested weir.
Yeah, well, so the water coming off the parking lot, and maybe a little off, the driveway will take care of itself, probably, but, so coming off the parking lot, it's kind of, it's sloping down, but you're.
There's that swell right in front of the parking lot, towards Old Turnpike, that will grab all that runoff if.
Yep.
Coming off parking.
That, the swell in front of the parking, yeah, in front of the parking lot, I see that, but overflow, well, you're referring to the overflow parking area, or something?
No.
No.
Yeah, everything flowing from here down would be grabbed from this swell.
Yeah.
Anything that comes back here would be grabbed.
But the way this is sloped here, it's, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna kind of spread out here, right?
Sure.
Yeah, it'll consolidate here, and this, this here.
And this is meant to catch it more or less, or at least.
That's, it'll catch the swells coming down the road, and.
And I haven't looked at that real hard, and I'm just, so I'm wondering, to what degree that, in a real storm situation, that could amount to a fair amount of water getting consolidated there, and I'm thinking here, that how does that wash out onto the road, and maybe across the road at that point, and I don't, I don't.
It should.
Picture the configuration.
We, we had to submit a drainage analysis, and that broad-crested weir is at elevation roughly 453.
Yeah.
In the road, in that area is 454.
So it's. It's a foot, it's a foot lower.
So it's, it's lower than the road, so if it does spill over that, it's gonna go down into the wetland.
Yeah, and where does that drain then, in that, that kind of a low, slightly depressed area along?
That eventually makes it down to the big wetland down at the bog.
It is in the far corners of it. Yeah. There's a big wet area down there in the far corner, and also it slips down that way. Okay, yes, I'm not, I'm not, I see the counterbalance, but I'm not picturing that exactly, but that there's enough slope through there, and it's distinct enough to where it's gonna carry off along the road.
Oh, yeah.
Towards the wetland and the backside, yeah.
You get about 150 feet from it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that kind of takes care of what would have been my next question.
It's about 20, 20, 20, 25 feet.
Yeah.
Between where the driveway hits the road and the base of the road.
When I'm talking, I'm talking, yeah, the weir.
I know, but where the wetlands come in, you've got a good, a good drop. Off, it's off to the left of the sheet, off the, off the sight line.
Okay, and Bob's seeing, you know, three, four, five, six feet.
Okay, other questions?
Good.
I'd like to, so at this time, I'll open the hearing for public comment.
Did, did we, we already ruled this complete, right?
Yes, we, we opened it, we set voting designation, I think.
Okay.
So at this point, if you're in a butter, or a member of the public, preferably a butters first, and you would like to speak on this application, you're welcome to do so at this time. And just state your name for the record and to the microphone.
I think you have to turn it on.
Oh, I guess you have to turn it on first. I forgot to tell you that.
Yeah, so, question, this is probably premature, but is there gonna be, so I, I own the abutting properties to the east, the farm there, and, question about screening, I guess, just the, the view, and is the, are the evergreen trees gonna remain there, or largely, and then if there's gonna be kind of a continuation of that line? Again, probably premature, but just putting that out there.
I can speak to it.
Yeah, go ahead if you want to.
The intent of the developer owner is to leave as many of those big trees as possible, because we have to grade the road going in and grade that bank, there'll be a cluster left. And the units will be, the high point where those trees go up is, is at 566. The second, yeah, the first floor, we're proposing to be at 561, so you're gonna be another, so you're gonna be about 80, 580. You will see the tops of the, of the units, but he's gonna try to retain as many of them as possible. Wanted to keep them all, but I told him it wasn't possible.
So, if you, and this is a question I had, because, similar, I noticed it, if you look at sheet, the existing site plan, sheet two, you've got that peninsula of trees, and then on sheet four, you've got proposed tree line between the two wells.
Yeah.
Are those the same sets of trees that you're keeping, or you're taking out and replanning?
It's the same set, just cut out from what grading is.
Cut out, okay.
So the extents are the same.
Okay, so essentially like that. Okay. So, answer your question, Tony, or maybe my question, on your topic. Could you, could you show, Tony, essentially what you just told me, like where on sheet two of, two of 11, where you're gonna keep, or attempt to keep?
So in this sheet, this right here is, I'll show you, it's existing, is that tree barrier comes up.
Sure, yeah.
So that's kind of coming up like that.
Yeah.
So where we had to do the driveway and the grading and everything, it's gonna cut out a bunch of the trees between the units and, and the, and the new development, so it's gonna go kind of like that, so this would be left.
So that would be remaining?
Yeah.
Okay.
And is the area sort of up and over that way, the same direction there, is that all, all was conserved, or, oh no, I guess it's not, that's part of the.
No, that's part of the limited common space in that area, but he, he wanted to buffer this out as much as possible, too, but because of the grading and everything else, it's a lot of those trees will have to come down.
What you're concerned, just, Tony, is that, just the appearance, is it, or something else?
Yeah, visibility viewing it, yeah.
Okay.
Kind of a direct shot from my property units.
Okay.
You know, it is more than just one house, I mean, it is.
So I, I keep forgetting that we have, I go visual.
It isn't the physical existence of the trees, I mean, as far as drainage, or just to pick something, but it's not that, it's, it's how it would look.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Topper.
So, here's the, the existing lot, approximately here would be the five units.
Yeah.
And driveway would be coming right about there.
Kind of in the middle, yeah.
And this set of, as much of this set of trees would be remaining.
Yeah.
In place. According to what's been proposed so far.
Do you have the option to plant some more trees, if you wanted to? I'm, I'm dashing you a little bit.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, I did have a question on that same sheet, two, you have.
Mr. Chair, the public hearing's still open, so I would wanna make sure that we're hearing as much from the abutters as possible.
Yes, my apologies.
Yeah, okay, so follow-up request, I guess, would be that if, I don't know, I mean, I think a lot of that is shadow on that bit right over there, so.
Yeah.
Might be a little bit deceiving to look at from this vantage point, but my request would be that it, there could be some screening, evergreen. Like a request for further evergreen trees to kind of continue that line of, of sproses or evergreen trees that are already there, just kind of, as, as a little bit more visibility protection from, from my property, my vantage point.
Okay, looking at this in a little more detail, and looking at the shadow of the, you know, non-existent bark, it does appear that the edge of the trees is right there, and that this darker spot is shadowed.
Right.
So, just to. Okay, other questions, comments?
No, that's it for now.
Okay.
Thanks.
Other members of the public or abutters who'd like to speak?
A member of the public, yes. I'm David Corson, and I live across the street from Tony's property, and so many of the issues that Tony's talking about, they affect us less, but they are a significant change in the neighborhood, and also, it's been a significant piece of property that people have used in a variety of outdoor ways. It's also been a piece of property that has not had significant lighting coming back up the hill from any of the back of the buildings that are presently there. So I would echo and support Tony's notion that if at all possible, there'd be planting of trees that would go up, so that that shadow area was, in fact, trees planted up to the corner of the property, because the protection then, it's provided for whatever housing corner of the property, because the protection then that's provided for whatever housing is built in that corner is going to be significant for both Tony and folks that are up, walking up on Old Canterbury Road, or people that may still be doing things in Tony's pasture. So that's one thing that I think could make a big difference, and I support totally what he's speaking about. And when you look at where the trees actually are and how far up they go in that hill, it would be almost doubling the length of the trees as they presently are planted, to take the end of where they're presently planted and go that distance towards the corner. So it's, it is almost like what the shadow is from the edge of the trees themselves to where the end of the shadow is. If trees were planted along the line there, that would make a big difference. Does that make sense?
There's the trees.
Right.
And you what you're essentially proposing as saying going to here.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
With that be considered, I think it would make an important difference. A couple other questions. I was not able to be here for the first hearing, but I don't know what discussion there was about, I understood the discussion about the front lighting, but the rear lighting and how that would be lighting up the slope of the hill into the areas where people are living on Old Canterbury, where we would be walking and doing things that are around the area, around the graveyard, where Tony is. I don't know what the back elevation looks like and what lighting there would be back there. The less, the better for those of us living behind it or doing things outdoors behind it.
Do you want to take a second to answer that?
There's a proposed deck on the backside and for whatever fire safety requirements are, I think you probably need a light at an exit. It would be one of the regular door light.
Same here.
I would imagine it would be whatever fire safety requires at the door light, because it's going to be a small deck on the back.
Okay.
So a regular 60 watt, like over.
Yeah. They're not large spot lights.
No, he's not proposing anything like that.
There's a.
So Scott, would we be talking the same kind of fixtures that you've shown?
No, they would just be the by the door standard.
Like a porch light? Wall mount, not what you would be proposing for the wall mounts?
No, we're not, we're not showing a typical light from the side of the house.
There's only two, if you want to call them floodlights, shown on the front.
Right.
For the parking area.
Yeah.
And to both of your properties, they would be screened to significant extent by the remainder of those, the exist, the remainder of the pine trees.
Right.
Yeah.
In by the building.
And.
Right.
Well, yes, yes, yes.
So in terms of the pole lights, I was wondering if they were in the design of what's been put at Johnson's, which have actually worked out really well in terms of being only down, down lighting fixtures?
That's all that's allowed.
Yeah, thank you. The, I'm unclear, and the idea of having a sidewalk, from the public point of view, might answer it, but that's a slope going up from the back of those houses, and I'm assuming that the grading is not just going to be a flat grading for the houses and then a fairly abrupt wall going up then into the slope, but there's going to be some gradual working and grading so that it gradually works into the slope of the hillside going up towards the graveyard.
There's slight grading on the backside, just to catch from where we have the swale.
It's shown on sheet five, if you've got a copy of the plans.
Yeah. It's about 10 feet elevation change from the back of the slot, like 464 down to about 554.
From the.
564 down to about 554. From the back of where.
From the back of the trees to the back of the building is, is 10 feet.
But I was talking about from the back of the buildings to the front of the buildings. There is about a 10-foot elevation drop.
Yep.
Is that fair to say? Okay, so that, I'm wondering if that, back there, there's going to be a flat surface where the buil, where the houses are going to be built.
Trying to think. Why don't you take a look at?
I didn't see grade.
Why don't you take a look at that?
Come over here, sheet five has the proposed grade, so these dotted contours are the existing contours on the property, so it's, it's showing that none of this back here is going to be changed or regraded. These dark contours are the proposed grading contours. And then, so they need to regrade some of this to get the road in, to put a flat area in here, and then they're tying them into the existing contours so that all of this will stay as it is.
But this is a fairly sheer grade from here down to here.
Yeah, it's.
It's about 45 slope.
Okay.
10 over, it's 10-foot rise over 20-foot run.
And in the back, it's going back up into.
Yep, this is all going to be natural, and then from this line is all going to be conserved.
Good, thank you. I've heard the person representing the builder say a number of times that the owner really was not, does want to try to preserve as many of these elements as possible, and I really appreciate that. I think one other question from my end is, the crank pullers as a volunteer group that's very active in the community are finding themselves increasingly pinched in various ways of being able to keep some of the open trails that allow them to get off the trails that had gone back behind those houses that are now new lots, so that they're having to re路 them. They used to come out right at the end of the graveyard and come down the side of the trees that are on the left-hand side of the lot. And I don't know, I think I'm just putting in a bid for there being some consideration as time goes on for the possibility that they would continue to be able to work something out with the landowner so that they'd be able to come down that, that slope along the trees where the left blue line is, because that's where they've come out at the bottom.
I think, just for the board's clarification, there's a snowmobile trail that used to run, was it right about there?
I think it comes down towards the wetland.
And then they take, then they get into this field and come out and access.
Market.
It came out at the corner of the graveyard where that little piece is that goes up.
Right.
Old Canterbury, and then goes down behind where they're now building the houses.
Right.
And there's a bridge they've built.
Down to here.
Yeah.
This doesn't show, well, it shows the access, yeah.
Because I don't think they're going to be able to get out on the other side of that blue line, because it goes down into the wetlands at the bottom.
Right, right. Right.
And looking at the plan for where the houses are, it doesn't look like that would affect where the houses are at all. It'd be over towards that line of trees. As I understand it, the owner's under no obligation to do anything, any more than we are as long owners that allow their lights on the property.
I have walked that, and I think it comes out here.
Yeah, right down.
And straight across the road, and then there's a little bit of, of an old footpath to the backside of the thing, so.
Yeah, so.
I don't think this would impact that too much.
But I would observe something, this, because it's proposed as a condominium, it's eventually going to be up to the, whether the condominium association.
Certainly. Has nothing to do with this board.
So, so I would say this is private property, so the private property owners would be the ones to determine the extent to which they're willing to allow access.
Certainly.
Mr. Frankwitz, I believe you mentioned that currently that field out back is cut for hay, and the topic of public access has come up now. If we wanted to provide for one or both of those things, those should be explicitly allowed in the open space documentation when it comes in. So if the intent is to continue to hay that field out back, agriculture would need to be allowed in that open space when it's, when it's conserved as open space, and the maintenance of that would need to be sort of reflected in the condominium documents. The public access, if it were to be guaranteed, would also need to be guaranteed in that documentation. And again, some description of public access just to the land, public access to some sort of official or unofficial trail, if some sort of official or unofficial trail were to exist, where do the responsibilities for maintenance of that fall? So if that, if those are things that haven't been decided yet, that would be a, a topic to discuss about whether that would be something that the board would want to see before approving this, or whether that would be something you would feel comfortable with staff reviewing when it comes in as a condition of approval. But I think you would need to specifically make that condition of approval, that the documents will be submitted for review by town staff to their satisfaction.
James, I'm, I'm not quite grasping the point. The requirement on the applicant's part is to have a conservation document.
The applicant has indicated that they intend to preserve the majority of this parcel out back as open space, so they will need some sort of documentation that will go alongside the condominium documents solidifying that.
Okay, so, okay, so you got that requirement.
So if they, if they are preserving that space.
So they're going to preserve the space, and that's a requirement of our ordinances to do this?
It's largely voluntary by the applicant, but if they are proposing to conserve it as open space, we want to make sure that we're doing it right.
Okay.
And have the documentation in place.
This is part of what I'm trying to grasp. Does, does the multifamily unit and open space conservation, is that part of the ordinance that if somebody wants to do a design like this with five houses all clustered in one, that the rest of it must be maintained as open and conserved, or is it just say?
Wait, so the applicant isn't required to donate all of this open space, they're choosing to, but there are a few different ways that you can actually restrict open space in perpetuity. They would be able to deed the land to the town for conservation, they'd be able to deed the land or donate an easement to a conservation organization like a land trust.
Yeah.
Or the option that I'm understanding that they're proposing to do is that they're going to put that into the condominium documents, that the open space will remain private property and will be the responsibility of the condominium association to maintain as open space.
So, okay, so the only requirement that we have from an ordinance perspective is that we see some kind of documentation that preserves the open space as they designated it.
That, that want, now that they're proposing to have open space, we want to see how they're doing it, and we want to see the documentation.
Right. But exactly how they do it, whether it's one of the three or four, maybe five ways you described, or any of that, is really up to the applicant.
It's up to the applicant to decide how we would want to see the documentation for whichever mechanism they choose before a final approval.
Just so we're sure that the document shows that it will be conserved.
Correct. And the fact that the applicant has come and stated that they intend to conserve this as open space on the record and it's shown on the plans would be enforceable. But typically, we like to go that extra step further so we can see exactly how and what the conditions are and get that on file. It makes it more official.
Okay. But I, I want to be careful here. We're not going to rule yea or nay based on whether or not the owner, private landowner, decides what he's going to do relative to the snowmobile trail.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Not our jurisdiction.
Yeah, that's why I was a little bit concerned.
What I would say is, we would want to make sure that what the applicant intends to do is reflected in the documentation that they submit to us.
Okay.
So if they intend to continue to hay the field out back, we would want to be sure that the conservation provisions of that open space allow for continued agricultural activity to take place on those lands. If they just say this is conserved in perpetuity and can't be touched, that would include you can't touch it for agriculture. So if the intent is to, to continue to hay the field, we want to make sure that what they're giving us reflects that. If the applicant intends to continue to allow official or unofficial access to that property by the public, they can do so, but we want to make sure that whichever way they have chosen is reflected in the doc, in the documentation. If it's open space that is essentially still the property of and to be maintained by the condominium association, I would say by default that would not allow public access because it's still private property. So if they want official public access to be allowed on this open space, they should provide for that in the documents.
But must they state that now as part of the application?
No, that's in the.
They, they should state it in the documentation that they submit for the conservation of that space.
Okay, but that's not up for us to consider, I guess is what I'm saying.
I would say that.
Whether or not they state it is not our purview, I guess is what I'm saying.
It is our purview to the extent that once they state it and conserve that land in that language, that language will be binding. We want to have the binding language on file. So we may not be the ones to tell them that they have to allow public access, but I think it's our purview to tell them that if they choose to allow public access, they need to provide us the documentation that allows for that.
Correct.
As the final documentation that they intend to put into place.
Okay.
Yep. Good, nicely stated. Thank you.
Can finish me up, just from my end. So then, I, I had no sense or intent that there would be any requirement of them to provide public access. I'm stating what I think would be something that would strongly consider, and I understand how then it would be put in the documents. The other piece of that is that what I did hear was that presently it is private property that the use of it can be decided by the condominium association, and that the intent is for that use to remain a hay field, but that, that's not binding, at least as I understand.
Once it, once it went into the documentation, we had conservation documents that are showing it's going to continue to be maintained by the condominium association, it's owned by the condominium association, but they have conserved it as open space, that will be binding. So if they put in the documents, this will be open space and it can be hayed and agricultural activity can continue to take place, that's the documentation and those will continue to be allowed. I would say it would still be the purview of the condominium association to decide how that happens, if they chose who did the haying, who did the maintenance, but those things would continue to be allowed in.
But as a public citizen, then I would want to see that the next course of documents be clearly stating that intent, to have it remain as a field to behave by whoever it chose.
Okay.
Is that fair to say?
They, I would say if that's what they intend to do, we would want to see that, we would want to see that written out in the documentation and put on file.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other members? Go ahead. We're the same members.
Tony, again, follow up comment. Just a comment of appreciation to the intent of this proposal to minimize. Just a comment of appreciation to the intent of this proposal to minimize impact on the agricultural land. Very much appreciated. Have been farming in this area myself for, or associated with it for 20-plus years and not a small thing. So yeah, to keep it and have that intent of trying to keep a large chunk in aesthetically pleasing agricultural land is greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Okay, other members of the public who'd like to comment? Okay, I will close the public comment section, subject to reopening if need be. Questions from the board?
Well, at this point, we're gonna be continuing this, so, as far as.
Yeah, you stayed late.
Yeah, no, that's why I'm about to leave. But I just want to understand, we're gonna be, it sounds like we've got some things to continue plus the last item, so I'm gonna.
Okay.
I don't think we have any vote at this moment.
Not at this moment.
What do we have yet to do?
One more item, I think.
We want a sidewalk.
I don't feel the need, but like I say, I'd be willing to go out and.
You were concerned about the sight lines on the grade.
Uh, no, I was concerned that they weren't shown in the drawing.
Oh, they are there.
No, they're not. Where he was gonna grade is not included on the drawing, that's why I asked.
Are those, are those sight lines existing? Those are the existing?
Joe, I think you're not even aware of it.
The sight line plan, the dotted lines are the existing grades.
This is the existing grade. On this side, he shows he's gonna grade it. On this side, he needs to grade it, but he doesn't show. That's why I asked.
I'm getting the, I'm hearing at least three noes on the sidewalk.
Well, Bob.
But, go ahead.
Okay. So you are concerned though about the sight line relationship?
No, I think he can, he's an engineer, I think he can grade it, I just didn't. He didn't show it on the drawing and I, you know, that implies he's not gonna do it.
So if I can contextualize this, I've added a new condition number one on the site plan, case 18-17, if the following changes be made to the site plan, show grading to the east of the driveway on the site profile.
Nicely said.
Then I'm happy. But I was happy when he said he was gonna do it anyway, so.
Okay.
Are we, what are we on a sidewalk?
I think.
Did you say?
I think, I think we, I heard a nay, three nays. So that's a majority, so sidewalk is out. Like I said, I could, I could see it, I don't need to see it.
Joe, before you leave, I heard you say that you were understanding we were continuing. I don't think that's been decided by the board yet.
No, it hasn't.
I got the.
Okay.
Question for Mr. Frankowitz on sheet two. You have a dotted, or a dotted, yeah, I guess a dotted line that runs across the front.
It's coming from across the road.
From, yeah, coming across.
That's the soil line.
Soil type, okay. Okay. What I thought, but. I'm gonna double check that I was interpreting it correctly. Okay, other questions?
Okay, I'm gonna throw one out.
Sure, go ahead.
The soils. Is any of this prime farm land?
Primag soils? I don't believe so. That would be something that Mr. Frankowitz should have declared.
It is in the agricultural overlay, this portion of it.
That's not primag soils necessarily. And that would be on a granite state, or granite map overlay, GIS. Primag soils, I don't think we have any in this area, in this lot. I think there's, I don't believe this lot has it. I think there are further, like Harmony Hill area in the prior application. Is that area. Okay, other things, other questions from the board? Comments from town staff? We just have the single condition so far?
So I'm making some minor tweaks.
Okay.
So for the purpose of the subdivision, prior to the signing of plans, I requested that the following changes be made to the subdivision plat, adding the 50-foot setbacks to the plat, adding a note identifying the previously approved waiver and the date of approval, so that that information carries forward on the plat. Two, the applicant will acquire and provide copies of all necessary federal, state, and local permits to the town.
Add, to interrupt you, add one that remove the soil type line from sheet two.
Is that in the big set of plans?
Yes.
That's the site plan, set of plans. To hold that thought.
Okay, sorry, you were on subdivision.
Three, deliver three signed and stamped copies of the plan for signature. Four, and this is one, the more you read, the more you know. So I'm still discovering some things in the code. We have a requirement that we get a certification of monument installation prior to final approval. So on subdivisions, I want to start putting this in to make sure that the applicants are aware of that and to make sure that I'm aware of that, to make sure it gets done.
That would have been on the last one. There's no monuments are going in on this one.
Have you recorded that deed yet?
No, I just brought that over.
Yeah, I'd say we're just doing all of this, finalizing it as as a set. And I'm about to get down there. So prior to the issuance of a building permit, the plat for the prior approval, case 18-12, shall be recorded prior to or concurrently with this plat. So that there's no complication with which one was reported first. Number six, record the plat with, this plat with the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds within one year of this decision. Seven, provide a state-approved septic design. So those are seven conditions on the subdivision. On the site plan, as noted, there were three waiver requests that were submitted. The two waiver requests to section 3.02 of the subdivision regulations are unnecessary. Those deal with roads and we interpret the drive coming into the site as a driveway. So the remaining waiver is to section Roman 7A7 regarding a traffic study. The applicant requests relief from the requirement to submit a traffic impact study as part of a major site plan. Staff doesn't take a position on whether the board should grant the waiver or not, but the applicant did mention in their waiver justification that they anticipated 10 trips per day coming out of this site. Staff doesn't agree. Total, was my understanding of the way I read it.
Two trips per unit?
Yeah, staff didn't agree with that. So staff pulled out the sixth edition of trip generation, which I think was from the 1990s, so there may well be a more recent edition, but that's the one we had in the office. That estimates an average of 5.86 trips per unit per day. So a total estimated trips of 29.3 trips per day on this site.
Part of it was a bicycle or something.
Point three?
So if the board is amenable to granting that waiver, staff suggests that it be conditioned upon adding a note to the plan identifying that that waiver was approved and including the date of approval. And then recommended conditions of approval for the site plan. Prior to the signing of plans, one, that the following changes be made to the site plan. A, show grading to the east of the driveway on the site profile. B, Bob, what was it?
Remove the soil line from sheet two. Soil line boundary.
You mean that go off the lot, right? The ones that go off the lot.
Uh, do you show soil? I thought, I thought you showed soil types elsewhere.
Sheet two would be the existing conditions.
Yeah, never mind then, sorry. I just, I had a, I didn't know what it was off the top of my head because I didn't see it in the legend.
I can trim and pack, so it's.
No need, no need for that condition at all, never mind. It's fine.
So just the one change to the plan. Condition two, the applicant will acquire and provide copies of all necessary federal, state, and local permits to the town, including but not limited to the driveway permit except as denoted below. Number two, three, submit the proposed condominium documents, including language related to the ongoing preservation and maintenance of the proposed open space, to be reviewed by, instead of town staff, I'm putting town council. And that cost would be extended to the applicant for the legal review. Number four, that subdivisions 18-12 and 18-16 shall be fully approved and signed. Condition five, deliver three signed and stamped copies of the plan for signature. And then prior to the issuance of the building permit, condition six, provide a state-approved septic design.
Okay. So in terms of.
Linda, recording of the open space documentation before signing or before building permit? So seven, open space documentation should be recorded with the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds.
So in terms of a motion, we would need. Hang on. Yeah, we gotta do the waiver first, but I want to double check on process.
So.
With subdivision as one motion, site plan as a second.
We deal with a waiver.
We gotta do the waiver.
I would suggest that, because there was still some discussion of continuance and I'm not sure whether you want to discuss that further.
I was bringing up, I was assuming something that you've made much clearer is that we were much further along than I was assuming.
If somebody wanted to continue this, now's the time for that motion. If not, motion one, I think approval of subdivision with conditions. Motion two, approval of waiver on site plan. Motion three, approval of site plan with conditions.
Process question?
Sure.
If I would like to discuss and have us consider trees to provide the buffer that we heard requested.
Site plan?
Which, when do we bring that up, or when do I bring that up?
That would be on site plan.
It'd be now, you can bring it up now. I mean, we're talking about both.
We can talk about it now, but if you wanted to require it, I would add it as a condition to the site plan.
I mean, we don't often get very specific suggestions and requests. And I, I have to say, I think the request for some additional buffering vegetation, in this case, makes sense to me. And I was thinking of something along the lines of adding some, adding some non-deciduous trees. Basically, as you said, Bob, or maybe Tony said, to sort of fill in the shadow and maybe go up to the line there. And it wouldn't, you know, in an ideal world, you know, you'd ask them to be 50-foot trees, but obviously that isn't really a.
Just dig up the ones that taken down.
Right. But I think at least putting some in there, you know, so that you have something as wide that continues, I think would make sense in this case, you know, from, from the perspectives that they talked about. And I think would also reinforce that we at least, even if we don't, at least we consider what the other folks have said when we come to the public sessions. So I think we should at least have a discussion on that and then vote one way or the other, which way we want to go.
I would, I'll take a example for that. Mr. Frankowitz relayed to us, I think from the applicant, about the buffering and the screening to the existing structure. If you look at sheet six, which is the lighting plan.
One second, Bob.
What? That is, the numbers there, if you don't know how to read these or you haven't read them before, it's essentially, that's how much light shows on the ground. The light pole. What I'm, what it does not show is, I think what Mr. Corson brought up, is that you can see light from the, the light pole, the post, whatever, through, even though you're not getting any visual illumination for your feet, you can still see it. Just like you can see headlights, you know, from away. What I would consider, or I'd like the applicant to consider, or the board to consider however, would be taking that essentially existing tree line, which is the blob on sheets, sheet six, and extending it toward old Ken, or old Turnpike Road. So essentially down the page, toward the, parallel to the drive, or toward the drive, toward the driveway.
I think if you run essentially on the page two vertical to hit the corner, that minimizes how much they'd have to put in.
I think that's excessive.
You're also gonna start showing the sight line.
What do you mean? No, 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 I think Al's, Al's talking about going up to the corner.
Oh, yeah.
You're talking about going up.
Yeah, well, let me tell you.
Yeah.
From here, just basically going up to the corner. So it's this, this much, so it's.
It looks a lot bigger here than it does there.
About 90 feet.
Yeah.
90 feet of trees.
Huh?
It's 90 feet, 90 to 100 feet of trees.
So trees like.
20, 20 to 30.
Headlock, you can put like 10 or 15 feet apart, so we're talking eight or nine trees.
It's a nice gesture, but how long are you going to live? You know, are we talking, well, are we talking, because what's been, the point's been made, that, I mean, you've got the height of the house. If you're not wanting, and what lights are we talking about in the rear?
I'm not just talking about the lights, he talked about, a couple people talked about.
Not wanting to see the house.
Yeah, if you're putting in, when you put in a tree, it's.
It's just gonna be a 8-foot tree.
Yeah, it's gonna be eight to maybe 10 feet. And they're expensive if you haven't bought a tree lately.
Well, if you're gonna bid on a 10 or 20-foot tree, they sure are expensive. No, but smaller, that's why I said how long you're gonna live. And we were talking evergreens, I mean, it depends on, I mean, pines go pretty fast, you know, some spaces, but the rest, arborvitus, which a lot of people plant, you have to, you have to be young if you want to see them big. So I just wonder if this is a little bit of seeming to want to do the right thing, but, but not accomplishing a whole lot, number one, but putting the applicant to a certain expense. The, the idea is kind of nice, as I said, but we're talking, if, if lights are the issue, and that's.
I don't think it's just light, I think it's looking at your backyard.
But I don't know what privilege you have not to see somebody else's house, let's just say. Because the other person is looking.
There's no house there now.
Huh?
There's no house there now.
But this is true of all new houses or existing houses, you're looking at the other guy's house. I'm just to, yeah, so we don't have the option with existing houses to say, gee, we're going to impose something on them to block the other.
Well, we often include buffers.
We often include buffers.
Yeah, but those are, those are. Those are very close proximities, but I'm just, I'm.
You're finding a.
We're guessing at how much is going to be visually blocked.
I think we, in the site regulation. I think we, in the site regulations, have a couple different provisions, so I want to make sure we're talking about them correctly. We have buffer zone requirements. However, a buffer zone is typically required wherever a commercial or industrial development abuts an adjacent residential property. So, I would suggest that the buffer zone requirements don't apply here. In K one three, required improvements B then, it says every development shall include landscaping to enhance the, the appearance of structures, to screen parking, loading, storage areas, and waste disposal facilities to improve the visual character of the immediate area. That, I think, the board would need to decide how much of this landscaping would fall into that description. The landscaping areas section under design standards then reads as follows. For all landscaping areas, shade trees shall be planted in intervals of no more than forty feet apart, and shrubs, perennials, and ground covers shall be planted en masse among the trees. Combination of evergreen or indeciduous plantings are encouraged. A wall, barrier, or fence of uniform appearance, six feet height, and extending to within six inches of ground level, may be used in conjunction with plant materials. All buffer areas are to be maintained as an integral part of the landscape. So, I would say if you're talking about how many trees and what to apply, I think it would be a discussion of what should be the landscaped areas in which the landscaping area standards would apply. I think that, uh, requiring landscape areas along the entire boundary line of the abutting property would be a little excessive. But there may be a smaller amount along the lines that the board is thinking about, that the applicant might be willing to do, and that we can come to an agreement on, so that it doesn't have to be a requirement.
Well, I was judiciously quick, James.
Yeah, I thought it was very definitely quick.
Again, I'm, I'm just gonna emphasize the fact that if you, if you're putting in, and I probably expressed it also, but if you're putting in the typical smaller tree you're planting, it's gonna be a while before that amounts to anything as far as a visual break. The, uh, the presumption on the part of somebody looking at it is that they're not gonna be attractive. But how many other buildings surround where you are, depending on the members of the audience who brought this up, but how many other buildings around? You could, you could, I couldn't think of a few. Site is not attractive. So, this, these new buildings, they may, you know, they're not gonna be, if you like looking at trees, they're not gonna be just trees anymore. They're gonna be trees and buildings. But, um, planting some small trees extended, you know, twenty years down the road, you might be able to see the buildings probably anymore. And this is also, by the way, when buffers are put in, this is a short, it's a short distance kind of viewing where you're, you're blocking, or James referred to commercial sense, where there's some substantial, uh, structure that's different than everything else around it. I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking these aren't so much different than what else is there, they're just new, but there are other residences all around there. And so, so I'm just saying, the trees are gonna be so, and we don't, we're, we're, where do you put the trees? I mean, you have to find the sightlines of people that are going to be offended, I guess, and put trees in some way that block these buildings. It's a problematic situation.
If we were to do, uh, to, to move forward on this route and make that change, there are a few different ways that we could go about it. We could continue and have a site walk and see where things should be situated. We could say that we'd like you to provide landscaping that complies with K one four B, which is the landscaping area design standards, stretching to this certain area. We could say that, uh, some of those things will be field-sited, um, in conjunction with, you know, between the applicant abutters and staff to mutual agreement. That would require more work on staff's part, but that might give some flexibility.
I gotta point out.
And I would say those would be our three options.
I'll make a comment that I just noticed or finally hit me in the face, is that the thing to keep in mind that the, there is a ten-foot drop between the base of the trees and the base of the units. So that, from the perspective of West Street, which is where Mr. Mattress lives and Mr. Corson live, or property abutting, you'll be looking at the, or you won't see the first ten feet of the units.
There's no property higher or lower, because that's relative to this point you're making. Is there, are they sitting higher or?
They're sitting slightly lower.
Yeah. It'll be the high point on the land, and then it drops back.
Right, and then it'll drop off. So, you'll be.
They see less.
They'll be actually seeing less. So, you won't, from that perspective, you won't see the first floor of the majority of those units. I think if that little blob of remaining trees was extended out another twenty feet, twenty, thirty feet over time, that you would not see the, any of the units from West Street. The opposite direction, none of the occupants of the five units would be able to see out from, see their neighbors. Either the, they would probably still see your barn buildings. Uh, they wouldn't see Mr. Corson's house.
Maybe they'd like to.
Maybe they'd like to, I don't know. That's something for us to consider.
The public input we got says.
Exactly. It would. Scott's horn, the board, it's ten o'clock. My brain is turning to mush.
Let me ask the, the applicant, is, is the addition of some, not a line of trees, but something that might even have some landscaping qualities, is that, does that have some?
I think I could convince him doing like that twenty-foot extension on the end of the existing tree line. Now it'll block most of, that'll block the units. So, add like every, however separation, we're separating them, seven to eight feet, right? So, every, every, say, four, five, six trees in that area.
So, would that be a condition of?
I'm thinking of continuing to.
Motion to continue.
You may have stayed an extra half an hour.
You, you intimated something else. If, if we're satisfied with that, you would.
Okay.
Suggestion.
Whatever.
And that would satisfy what Hal seems to be concerned about. Why don't we just add that as a, a condition?
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, if we were to add that, I would add this as prior to a certificate of occupancy.
On the site plan.
Yes, so this would be an eighth condition on the site plan. Prior to a certificate of occupancy.
Extending.
The applicant shall continue the existing tree line.
I was gonna say, why don't we just leave it up to the, well, maybe we shouldn't leave it up to the applicant. Yeah, minimum of, of.
Six trees.
Twenty feet.
A minimum of twenty feet containing, at minimum, six trees?
Oh, no, that's good, uh, can we say thirty feet?
Yeah.
Thirty feet gives, I think, provides, to the north cuts, or the, yeah, to the north, cuts off the sightlines to Corson's and Mattress fairly well of unit one, which is the one on the left. But I think using the word minimum, if the applicant would, wants to incorporate some more, maybe some shrubbery or something, that might give you the ability to screen the existing, uh, structure.
So, I would say.
I don't want to put that as part of the condition.
Right now, um, the landscaping area doesn't talk about height of trees at planting, but the buffer zone does. It says the tree shall be a height of at least four feet at the time of planting of a type that will, uh, grow to a height of at least six feet within three years. So, I would say.
Six.
Six feet.
Within three years.
Within three years.
Within three years.
Well, if it is, frankly, if they're not a little better than that in terms of growth, they're not gonna, you're gonna wait six, what, six years, and you haven't accomplished a whole lot.
Three years.
But I, I would, I would say that since we have that minimum standard for tree planting somewhere, that would be our expectation, that that would be the minimum that they could put in.
Right.
Nothing smaller than that.
We can use that definition in the condition if need be, or reference it. So it's, just so it's clear.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, this application, eighteen, I think, dash sixteen?
So, I, I think eighteen dash sixteen first with conditions. Approve waivers for eighteen dash seventeen, then approve eighteen dash seventeen with conditions.
Please, the, the nine, I think you're up to nine conditions now, maybe?
Uh, I'm up to eight on the site plan, but if you, if you're making the motion right now for the subdivision, and you, and we're going in that order, motion, 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 I'll read this subdivision conditions again before we vote.
Yes, please. I was gonna request that.
Second, though, we need a second.
So, the motion is to approve the subdivision with conditions right now?
Oh, why don't we read the conditions first before we make the motion? Well, the motion that we made. That way it's clear. Because Joe included the conditions in the motion, then we know if somebody wants to do a second or not.
Fair. Give me one.
Do we have one minute for a bathroom run?
Yes, as long as, James, nobody speaks.
Now we have a forum.
Now we have a forum, yeah.
Why do our site plan regulations have two numbers next to each other? We should have flipped the second numbers in the letters.
Yeah, well.
K dot one dot three.
I was trying to get the, all the regulations and procedures rewritten, so that instead of doing outline format, so that you gotta look to know what Roman number you're on three pages back, like they list all of them.
Everything is sequential, yeah.
For each outline, but the software doesn't necessarily do that. Okay.
Under duress, but.
Ready for, to read conditions? For subdivision?
Yes. Uh, so, recommended conditions of approval for case eighteen dash sixteen, which is the subdivision approval, prior to the signing of plans, that the following changes be made to the subdivision plat. A, add the fifty-foot setbacks to the plat. B, add a note identifying the previously approved waiver and date of approval, and that waiver was to section three point oh one E, regarding a narrow strip of land that is less than one hundred feet in width. Two, the applicant will acquire and provide copies of all necessary federal state and local permits to the town, including but not limited to a subdivision permit from NHDES and a ten of Northwood driveway permit except as specifically denoted below. Three, deliver three signed and stamped copies of the plan for signature. Four, provide certification and monument installation as required by section three point zero six of the subdivision regulations. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, condition five, that the plat for prior approval case eighteen dash twelve shall be recorded prior to or concurrently with this plat. Condition six, record the plat with the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds within one year of this decision. Condition seven, provide a state-approved septic design. Those are all of the conditions on this one. I would say for context, since the conditions for eighteen dash twelve have not fully been met, that we would only expect the applicant, um, for example, for the driveway permit, to get the driveway permit for this proposed design. They don't have to get one for what was approved previously and then get a new one. So, I'm anticipating that the applicant is probably going to meet conditions and record eighteen dash twelve and eighteen dash sixteen simultaneously.
Makes sense.
So, we need a.
Motion to approve with conditions is stated by Mr. Burdine. For the.
Joe already did that, so are you giving a second? You're doing a second.
I thought you took it back.
No, we didn't.
It was on the table.
I seconded it.
Okay.
I thought the word, I was gonna ask, I thought you were up to eight, nine, is it because?
There are more conditions on the site plan.
Yeah.
There's more.
So, I'll read those again when we get there.
That's why I want to be very clear as to where we're at, so, okay.
This is subdivision now, right?
We're on subdivision.
Okay, I'm with you.
Questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none.
Cussed and discussed.
Oh, yeah. Well, we've discussed a whole lot of stuff because it's the two applications together. Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, the subdivision has moved, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. So, subdivision is good.
The next motion that I would suggest is to approve a waiver to section Roman seven, A seven, regarding a traffic, uh, of the site plan regulations regarding a traffic study. The applicant requested relief from the requirement to submit a traffic impact study as part of a major site plan. And the justification is that the trips will be below the numbers we discussed previously. Staff's suggested number was approximately twenty-nine point three trips per day. If the board approves a traffic study, staff recommends that it be subject to condition A, to add a note to the plan identifying the requested waiver and the date of its approval.
Motion to approve waiver, as stated by James.
With conditions.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kathy, second by Ms. Smith. Discussion on the traffic study?
Well, the only thing that occurred, and I, I don't, I don't know if we talked much about it before, but I don't see this as creating a difficult situation here in the residential flow, and all these cars aren't moving at the same time, and.
If this was further down the road, I think it would be more of an issue, but it's, it's already in a fairly well-traveled area right at the end of a major route access, and being very familiar with it, even thirty trips is not gonna be that much of an impact in that area.
Some of them will be walking across to the commercial.
I think there, you're not, you're definitely correct. It's like, you're not gonna be driving down the road to go get something from the corner market. Okay, further discussion on the waiver? Uh, just a reminder that, you know, granting waivers, you know, they're not in, contrary to the master plan, that it adds to the site application, et cetera, some other things that I can't remember off the top of my head without reading it, and I don't want to look it up. All those in favor of the motion granting the waiver, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay, so we just need to have that condition.
So, third motion then would be to approve the site plan application, subject to the following conditions. Prior to the signing of plans. Prior to the signing of plans, number one, that the following conditions be made to the site plan. A, show the grading to the east of the driveway on the site profile.
Just to clarify on that, as is my meant, there are some non-substantive changes that I don't think need to be included in the motion. Should they be?
Do you want B, make any necessary technical edits?
Yes, that would be perfect. I don't necessarily want it, but if it needs to be in there, then let's have that.
So that's 1A and 1B. Number two, the applicant will require and provide copies of all necessary federal, state, and local permits to the town, including but not limited to a town of Northwood driveway permit, except as specifically denoted below. Number three, submit the proposed condominium documents, including language related to the ongoing preservation and maintenance of the preserved open space to be reviewed by town council at the applicant's expense. Number four, subdivisions 18 dash 12 and 18 dash 16 shall be fully approved and signed. Number five, deliver three signed and stamped copies of the plan for signature. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, condition six, provide a state-approved septic design. Condition seven, open space documentation shall be recorded with the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds. Prior to the certificate of occupancy, condition number eight, the applicant shall continue the existing tree line a minimum of 30 feet, containing at minimum six trees, matching the descriptions contained in the design standards, Section K-14A.
And you're okay with that as a condition? Okay. I know you said you probably could convince the owner to do so, but-
Yeah. We'll just have a good plan.
Evergreen.
Yeah, that's-
Motion to approve the site plan with conditions as stated by Mr. Burden.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I'll give them as Baldwin. Discussion? Further discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, those abstaining. Nice work.
Thank you.
Very good.
I'll give you my copy.
So Bob, in reference to Hal's comment at the beginning, you want to start the meetings at six, so we can, and then they can actually start at 6:30 on time?
Who's that? What?
Oh, the, with the minutes?
Yeah.
I just don't like the idea-
Of making people wait.
I listened to Linda talk about how we go public, or how we can't have public meetings, and I got to tell you, trading notes around on the minutes sounds like a public meeting to me, and I don't think we should be doing that. And second, I don't like, no offense, but I don't like you making the judgment as to what's a grammatical or a typo. We should all hear that. And I was, I was disturbed to see two different sets of notes here.
That was a bit-
That, that just-
Well, I mailed them to everybody, so I'm just saying.
No, and I just like getting them in the mail like you read them prior to, I liked that, to be honest with you.
But you all got physical copies of them, they went to your houses.
The mailing was fine, and then we just come with our markups.
And you didn't bring them with you.
I brought mine.
Okay, but people didn't bring them with you.
You got one, you got one?
Then you would have had, you all would have had one. I'm sorry, it's been a long day.
No, I appreciate you having them in the mail to read prior to.
I think that was the right way.
We are trying to avoid sitting here for a half hour while you guys go through something that you've had for two.
Yes.
Right, yeah, so send them out, and then that's the copy we use, and that's the copy everybody brings marked up, and then it should take-
I don't, I don't care if you mark them up and bring them, and then we go over them.
Yeah, that's-
But nobody, like, only half of the people brought them last night.
Including the chairman.
And the problem, there was a mistake on my part for not saving some changes that I had made after Linda went over them. But, I mean, what's the difference of Linda making changes to them after I do them? I mean, does that bother you too?
I don't think the issue was, the issue was that in a case like tonight, some of us were operating off of copies.
Which, which is a, that, that was a fluke.
Yeah. That was a fluke, that's the first time I've ever had it happen.
But, I mean, honestly, Hal, we go back and forth with the minutes.
Yeah.
I'll do them, she'll read them, she changes some things, so I don't know what the difference is.
When you do them initially, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is then when you issue the minutes, draft to us, and then we via email or calls to you or whatever, edit the minutes in absence of everybody else.
Well, the point was wasting time with, you forgot to capitalize in extra A, there's, this word is spelled wrong, you know, that was the issue. That's a giant mistake.
These are just typos.
This is a technical edit.
The typos, essentially, they have nothing to do with sense or-
Right, there is a difference between-
And I apologize.
Grammatical errors and content. The board should always vote on any changes to content. But what we're trying to achieve, and I think we're getting closer to that, is having everybody, and we talked about this, and Susan followed through, and mailed them out so people could read them ahead, mark up your copies, bring them in, and then we can just go through them. Even if that includes grammatical, if you don't want those separated, if you just go through and read them, we'll make the changes.
Well, I wouldn't mind, for example, you or Susan bringing up your list of grammatical changes as we go through.
Do you want to know what changes we made?
No, we don't do that.
No, we don't do that.
We provide you a final copy.
No.
Didn't we just make grammatical changes?
Yeah, but that's, we're just saying.
We're saying we're going to give you a-
A copy.
A copy.
Yeah.
I don't always proofread them, sometimes I do, and just to, you know.
Right. But whatever, whatever copy you send out-
I was just checking to see if you were reading.
Is the copy I want to discuss when I come to the meeting.
Yes.
I don't want to have a discussion as to which version of the-
That was a step.
I think that was just a fluke.
That's never happened.
That's what, that's what happened.
Never happened before.
It has never happened before, and I've been here longer than anybody but Linda.
And the only reason it happened is because I mailed you guys a hard copy, which, that's never happened.
No, I love getting the hard copy, thank you.
So what I'd suggest-
It's not something I was doing on purpose or anything that changed.
What I'd suggest in terms of reviewing of minutes is, you can certainly point out grammatical errors and spelling errors, but look for them from the perspective of content. And I know Joe will do this.
Just not.
Very well. So is what happened in the meeting accurately reflected in the minutes? That's all you have to look for. We can always say, as motion to approve, you know, technical changes, technical edits to be handled by town staff, and then it's done. And we can go from, you know, 15 to 20 minutes of, minutes of grammatical changes, which I am majorly at fault for, to, yep, they look right, they're accurate, make the technical edits and go.
We shouldn't have to do that. If you just correct her on your paper and give her the paper, it doesn't make any difference whether you spelled the word wrong, because as long as you have it, you give it to her, she can fix something.
Yeah, exactly.
What I was asking for, like, if you, if you send me an email and say line 7, page 2, you know, these little, like, things that I don't catch, because I spent, you know, two days doing minutes and-
You don't have enough to do already.
Listening to the phone ring.
And they turn the heat on.
And then they make me really hot.
Does anybody need to be letting, contacting Susan on that basis? No.
I don't care, if you send me an email, that'll take me two seconds.
I know, but, I don't know, we can fix that, just like we do most of the other stuff. It's, it's the sense of things that counts the most.
Correct.
And if something, you know, an S is dropped somewhere or something that doesn't mean anything, or something's misspelled, I couldn't care less.
What started it was the fact that we had minutes and we spent 20 minutes with the meeting.
Okay. We still have more on the agenda for, and I'd like to get out of here by 10:30, so that gives me five minutes.
Everyone will you join now?
No.
The amendments?
The zoning amendments are going to be on the workshop.
Okay. Okay. CAP, I essentially got everything, but I have not done anything with it.
I left that on there because I wasn't sure.
Reminder, because it will be before the workshop, Jen Siz, our executive director, is making the rounds for her communities, just to introduce herself, meet with the governing organizations, et cetera. I believe she's on the agenda for October 9th.
Correct.
To meet with the board of selectmen if people are interested in attending.
I'm not going.
What are you doing on the 9th?
I have a school board meeting for my job, same night. I'll see if I can get out of it.
Is your normal agenda for that thing?
He confirmed it. I don't know if that's gonna-
No, that's fine.
Okay. I think she confirmed it a couple weeks ago. I think she told us we were first on the agenda and we just knocked out.
It's a board, board selectman meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I hope so.
It probably will be, yes.
Yeah, okay. If I can't make it, would you represent the planning board if nobody else is willing to?
You write down what I have to say.
Okay. I don't want to say anything, instead of throwing hello and thank you for your work or whatever, but I will try to, okay. Motion?
Do you want to adjourn?
Yep.
I can-
Okay, anybody disagree?
No.
Too bad.